As written.
A second?
Michael made the motion. Cerm is second. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, how about the minutes of April 10th and May 8th? Would anybody like to make a motion on those? Or comments? Would anybody like to comment about them? If anybody like to talk at all? I read them in mail. Okay?
No second?
That's both. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the first old business that we were going to deal with was 69-13 McDermott McManus, 14 Wood Hollow Road. But we're gonna take a, I believe Jeffrey Thayer was one of the voting members. There he is.
I'm sorry, Liz.
That'll be a little black mark. All right, so we will be going in order. So here we are, John McDermott, Victoria McManus, 14 Wood Hollow Drive, Rock Road, file 69-13. So these, Cerm is not sitting, correct? Go ahead, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great vote after the applicant, applicant's John McDermott, Victoria McManus. Property is 14 Wood Hollow Road. It's in the Love III zoning district. Ground cover in Love III is two percent. I think you're probably all familiar with the application. I'm new to this application, I know you are not. I know you guys, I think everyone took a site visit out there as well, but just to refresh your recollection, what we're talking about here is a former bulkhead connected to the structure that has now been inverted to a wine cellar. It's, I believe it's 32 square feet. And what that does, according to the Zone Enforcement Officer, is put the property over ground cover by 24 feet. The applicant is seeking to get a distributed documents that goes out the final permit on this renovation. And the CEO is taking a position that because this enclosed interior space is below a deck, that it counts towards ground cover. I know you had extensive discussion at the last hearing, I was here and I remember it. And I think since then, you've had a site visit to determine how low grade it is. I was there this morning as well. It's, I think, unless, unless anyone disagrees, it's about, the original bulkhead structure above grade is about six inches or so. So just, I know you have the site visit and since then, the matter's continued, as you probably all know, the bylaw has been, has been changed at this year's town meeting to, to exclude different portions of, of what's considered ground cover. Notably, I'm just reading from, from the bylaw here, the new bylaw excluded our decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an enclosed, above grade interior space. Also changed in the bylaw is the main part of the definition, which excludes bulkheads including associated stairways or other substantially below grade features. And so what we're, what we're seeking today is a finding that really no relief is necessary to start with, on the basis that number one, it's not above grade interior space, it's below grade interior space. And number two, or number two, I should say, that this is a substantially below grade feature. I don't think anyone can argue this is substantially above grade, or even mostly above grade, or half above grade, it's substantially below grade feature. The alternative, we have requested, you know, the applicant may raise an application request of variance. Obviously, we'd be asking for variance in the alternative. Number one, the shape part, if you degrade, it doesn't go over the structure. If it did, it would be excluded from ground cover, there's nothing doubt about that. Number two, it would be a substantial issue for the applicant, they have to renew this after they applied this building permit, built the space at a significant expense. For them to remove it now with the refrigeration and everything, it would be a substantial issue. Obviously, you know, we can discuss within, we will do the thing if it's within the rule, but it's about a lot more to do with the new definition and both of the, forever moving forward discussion.
Thank you. Anything from the board immediately? I was gonna ask Marcus, can you comment on the new, on the bylaw change?
I do. Unfortunately, Mr. Boggett was reading from the early draft of the bylaw change, the above grade language did not make it into final article change that is approved. As it is, the clause, decks and unenclosed porches not over, under, and enclosed interior space remains as the original block. This was discussed with Valerie Norton, Leslie Snell, and Subs for the Eleanor, and maybe anybody realized that's what happened. The language regarding substantial, below grade, whatever it is, unfortunately, didn't actually address the issue, which has always been from the beginning and remains unchanged, that decks over or under enclosed interior space continue to count as ground cover. They have an out in that, removing the decking from over the space, then the change to the bylaw, the wood trade and devaluation, as, however, as long as the deck remains over, their only outs are, their only other out is variance, as you find.
Go ahead.
Let me say, I disagree completely with the fact that those, that those two sections aren't exclusively on the, in other words, what's excluded, if that, if that hasn't been changed, is an enclosed space under a deck, right?
Don't, don't, just one at a time and then come back, Marcus. Go ahead.
All right, let me, let's assume it hasn't been changed, okay? As Marcus said, so I'll go to the old, the old bylaw.
No, why don't we just go with the new bylaw? I mean, what are we talking about, the old bylaw?
Well, let me, let me just make this, this distinction, all right? Because this is what, because this is exactly, Marcus is talking about the old bylaw, so I just wanna address that. What's excluded, okay, the old bylaw, right? Decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an enclosed interior space. So in other words, a deck over an enclosed interior space, is what Marcus is calling this, is excluded. Also excluded retaining walls, tents, a number of other things, okay? So, you know, if you, my, my point is, what is also, what has clearly been changed is the fact that substantially below grade features are excluded, period, okay? It doesn't mean, you know, you can't take both and add them on. In other words, a substantially below grade feature is excluded irrespective of whether it's under a deck, okay? If you have a, if you have an enclosed space under a deck, that is also excluded. So my point is, if you take, you know, in other words, if this is a substantially below grade feature, but it has a retaining wall that's over four feet, right next to it, then, you know, or the retaining wall would be excluded, the, the substantially below grade feature would also be excluded. In other words, you can't layer these provisions of the exclusions on top of it. So if, if, if I take Marcus for what he said, that, that portion was excluded from the change to the bylaw, what we still have is that substantially below grade features are excluded, and this is a substantially below grade feature irrespective of whether it's under a deck. And I think, and again, I think common sense has to prevail here. I mean, we all know what that, that provision is for. It's to exclude decks, clearly. But it's also to prevent someone from building a first story addition, sticking a deck over it, right, to come out from the second floor and saying, aha, not including ground cover. Well, that's what that's meant to prevent from the bylaw. That's not the case. It's completely, the interior space is completely below grade, and this, the bylaws has changed, just says substantially below grade features are excluded.
Mr. Boggett remains incorrect. These are two entirely different clauses. Again, decks not, decks over or under enclosed interior space, as has been the case before the change and now, remain, those areas remain as ground cover. Additionally, a new clause has been added to exempt substantially, substantially below grade finished or unfinished space. So once again, without the decking over this space, it does not count as ground cover. With the decking over it, it does.
Can I, no offense to, go ahead.
So the issue, so the, so the issue for us is to determine then whether it's substantially or not substantially?
I guess.
I would say the issue is to determine whether this is an enclosed interior space below a deck, because that's actually.
Right, but, but, but isn't an enclosed?
It is clearly substantially below grade space, and again, without decking over it, it would not count as ground cover. However, with decking over it, it does.
Well, it's clearly, it's clearly interior space with a deck over it, but whether it's above, below grade, above grade, or substantially below grade is, is the trigger.
The trigger is the decking over it.
Right, but the, so then, I'm, so the way that I'm, and you're saying that there's the two different clauses, because what I'm looking at seems to be that the, if it's substantially below grade, or below grade. Let me read it again, before I go forward.
The fix would have been to address the language not over or under enclosed interior space, not to include this new language. Rather, they included the new language, which unfortunately did not address the only issue in the matter, and that is the decking over enclosed interior space.
Okay, any questions?
And just to be clear, I could disagree more, that, that you can't, two provisions that are different than one another, that both, that, that one excludes and one doesn't. In other words, it's like saying, you can't, you can't go five feet from a, four feet from property line, because it's a five foot setback, and then saying, but exempt from that setback requirement is, you know, a, a gas tank that's two hundred gallons.
Okay, so, so I'm, I think I'm looking at the new, the, I'm looking at the language about the, the substantially below grade feature. Do we have, do you have the length of the other, can I just compare them? Otherwise.
While, while, while we're doing that.
Question, Mr.?
Go ahead.
Was a building permit issued for this?
Yeah, for the whole structure, absolutely.
For the?
For the bulkhead?
The wine cellar, the bulkhead? The wine cellar and the bulkhead?
So that's my knowledge, yeah. It was, it was issued, right? And then, I don't think it was caught ahead of time, right? Unless I'm, I don't, I don't think it was caught ahead of time. So, you know, this is, and, and, you know, that's a good question, because the fact is, you know, this is obviously a mistake, or, or a misinterpretation, and it's an innocent misinterpretation mistake. In other words, it was applied for like this, and no one said anything, and then they built the thing. And then, you know, they go to get their CEO, and then all of a sudden, it's ground cover. And, and I understand Marcus' interpretation, he's entitled to it, but I think, you know, this isn't a scenario like where, you know.
They did it.
We just did it.
Well, we don't know that. You're, you're just saying that. There's no evidence that, that it was, it was applied for in the billing permit application. If you have evidence of that, I certainly would feel better about it.
Yeah, 'cause that wasn't what was represented to us at first. Valerie came, when Valerie was before us, wasn't it? But, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm remembering wrong, but was that Marcus had brought this issue up to Valerie earlier, nothing was done about it, and then the building permit, like, nothing was done on the builder's side, and then when you flagged it in the permit, you said, I told you this a long time ago, and you guys didn't, right? That was, that's how I'm remembering it.
Again, possible, it's been a long time since.
Has the name else, is it ring similar?
I can find that out, but that isn't the story I got, the story that I got, and if, you know, that could be the case too.
Yeah, I mean, we are where we are.
Was that we applied for it, and this is coming from my client, but, you know, we didn't try to pull the wool over his eyes. We applied for this thing, we built, we spent the money, built the thing, brought refrigeration from the other side of the house into the thing, and then all of a sudden, now, now the problem after we built it, we would've never built it if.
'Cause I clearly remember Marcus saying that he had red flagged it as an issue early on.
When they had applied for it, Marcus showed me the email to Valerie, it comes from the 10th, 2013, addressing that. I believe that's when he submitted for the wine cellar.
So it was not part of the original application?
No.
And then you flagged it as an issue, and yet they went ahead and did it?
It may have been, it has no condition.
Well, they're, they're.
He's asking a question.
I know, but.
I was asking him a question, so let him answer, and then you can jump on the answer. Thank you.
The wine cellar may have been an ask for a condition.
Okay.
So in other words, they built it without permission, is that, is that what you're saying?
I don't think Marcus is saying that. I think he's saying it may have been. You've shown us no evidence that it was applied for, so who are we to believe?
I admire, as I recall.
Mine too.
Like she, you know, she didn't deny that the conversation had happened, I just think that she said that she didn't think it was truly an issue. So your, whatever happened, the conversation between your client and Valerie, who knows what happened, but my recollection was that it was flagged as an issue, and, and then it turned, and then, then it was done.
All right, well, in that, you know, if, so let me say this, if that is the case, then I stand corrected. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's the case, but.
Yeah, you know what, now I recall.
That could be, and in which case, right, if, if all of that is true, then certainly, it isn't a mistake.
But we're still where we are.
But we're still where we are, which is that it applies and it's excluded, so, and again, I can find that out, but I don't think it matters for the purposes of the application.
Go ahead.
Was zoning change anything to do with this particular application?
Yeah.
Something very specific to it. Leslie could give us direct election.
Mr. Chairman, there was a zoning change to the ground cover definition through Article 66, the 2014 annual town meeting, and, oh, sorry, it's 68. There were 35 of them, kind of easy to mix up, and they were all approved, I think. So anyway, the point of that ground cover change was to address this very issue. At least, you know, in my opinion, in the opinion of the planning board, because we talked about it as it contained this application, I think the general feeling was that it should count towards ground cover. It's under the deck, I agree with, you know, what Mr. Boggett said about the intent of that provision to really exclude decks over first floor additions. And I think it's, you know, if you read this definition change as, you know, separate exclusions, they're separated by commas, and rather than stacking them on top of each other, this is substantially below grade finished space, and it could be interpreted as if not counting towards the ground cover.
What, what was the thought behind the substantially below grade idea? I mean, would it mean that I could go out in my yard if I was totally maxed out and put another building that was only six inches above grade and not count as ground cover and have my little subterranean bunker, and that's okay? That seems crazy to me.
I think the intention was to address, you know, features maybe going down to basements that could potentially, you know, force ground cover.
Right, but the wording is just, I mean, it's very confusing to me. Again, what's substantial? Rick brought over, up the fact, it's, if it's over half, is that substantial? Who's to define substantial now? Marcus is supposed to sit here and define substantial? That seems crazy to me.
Well, I think, you know, I mean, first of all, you know, it's, it is Marcus, I mean, unfortunately for Marcus, he has that difficult job, and I need you to as well. I think, just to answer your question as well, you could also, under the bylaw, you can have your bunker be six inches above and cover it with a Bilco access and have all that bulkhead and go into your bunker, so, and that's.
Well, arguably, I could have four feet of concrete wall sticking out and, and five feet below, and it would be substantially below grade. And I could have windows in those walls. Oh, I could have basically another house, but it would be substantially below grade. It makes no sense to me. I'm not talking about your application, I'm talking about how that was written, unless it was specific to this, because arguably, this is substantially below, but. I mean, is the issue here, are we, are we ultimately, Marcus, you've made a determination, are we here to either uphold your? Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to talk about this one? No? So, Michael, what do you have?
I just think that this is, we were out there, we could not see this, it was under the deck.
I saw it.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, whatever it is, I think it's substantially below grade, it is, and I can understand, I mean, Marcus' literal interpretation of this, I don't, I, I would go along more with, I would go along with Rick's interpretation, where things are not layered, and I think that we should make a finding that it's substantially underground and does not count toward ground cover.
I think I agree with Michael, but it, but it begs the, you know, Marcus' next point is the fact that it's, it's, it's under a deck, and that's a whole different part of the bylaw, but it's still, it's still an issue.
See, I, I agree with Rick and Wes.
And whether that needs to get changed in the zoning by law.
Well, maybe it should, but I, I agree with Rick and Leslie if they're, that the comma, it goes excluding tents, comma, retaining walls, comma, goes on, and then, or, bulkheads including the associated stairways or other substantially below grade features, comma, bay windows, comma, unenclosed breezeways, comma. It's just one of those things that's excluded from, in my opinion, from ground cover.
But it says decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an unenclosed above grade interior space, so, all right, so, so then.
So that means that if a deck comes out and you had a bay window underneath, the bay window's gonna be counted toward ground cover, and so is the unenclosed breezeway.
Bay windows are excluded from ground cover.
Well.
Now, in theory.
I think we have this discussion.
Okay, but we, yeah, we have.
No, you have an unenclosed breezeway, which there are some on the island that have a deck on it, that should be enclosed, that should count as ground cover, I guess.
Okay, so.
Under, under, under Marcus' interpretation.
So, look, can we just, can we just look? But let's just, let's just do, continue what you were doing and just parse this out, right? Because, okay, so, so the ground cover, we know, is decks and unenclosed porches not, or, sorry, right, ground cover, horizontal area of a lot covered at grade by structures together with those porches, any overhangs, blah, 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 excluding decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an enclosed above grade interior space.
That above grade is, sorry.
What, so?
It's not part of the bylaw.
So what am I, so that's what I'm asking, like, what am I, what is this that's in our staff report, is different than what's in this?
That's from our.
No, this is in the update. Well, this is in the update that we're supposed to be reading, and it's different than this one.
Okay, and I mean, this, what? This is the one that you should be reading.
Okay, so we all have the wrong definition.
I think that, I think that's what Marcus is getting at, so is that that first portion that you're reading, okay?
Right.
It has not been changed, and that, and I think that's what Eleanor's just been good. So, so based on that, what we're relying on is the, is the.
So this is what was approved here? This was approved by the AG?
The one, you're looking at, in the, in the town meeting book, is the one that was approved, and that is.
Not by the AG.
No, by the town.
No, it was already, all these things were already approved by the AG.
They were?
Yeah, they were approved on July 7th, excuse me, May 7th.
Right, a while ago. So the, so the thing that's in our staff report is incorrect.
Wonderful. Anyway, I think we.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think, if I may, and I don't want to interrupt, but I, you know, really to answer Des' question, and, which I think goes to what Des' point was, is maybe, you know, maybe there has to be an additional change to the, to the bylaw, actually, if it was defined substantially, if it cares what Des' point was, you know, or to have some commas, I don't know.
It's more than just to have a certain square footage, like the shed.
It's gonna be a shed, the underground should be, be three.
So here's, here's, here's where I'm gonna fall on Marcus' thing. I think this is written poorly, and I think that it excludes substantially below grade finished or unfinished space, but the next comma that excludes says decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an unenclosed interior space, any unenclosed interior space. It does not differentiate and say that substantially below grade enclosed interior space doesn't count for the decks and porches. That's a separate exclusion, it's in the same section, so I don't think I'm gonna get there for the wine cellar. I'm just one person, but I, I, I do read things literally, and maybe it's poor drafting, but I think it's pretty clear that if they wanted to exclude under decks substantially below grade, then it would've said that. It only says decks and unenclosed porches not over or under an unenclosed interior space. It doesn't say a substantially above grade enclosed interior space, it says unenclosed interior space, and, so, that's, that's where I fall.
So in other words, per your draft, and correctly, it needs a couple of words to also include the stuff under the deck.
Well, I think if the whole purpose of it, as Leslie said, was that it was discussed and the change was done, like, including thinking about this application, then it, it should, it should've been more clear. I, I don't really, I, I think, you know, the, the, the reason, I don't know, I think that the, it says that decks with, over enclosed interior space, yeah.
All right, Marcus wanted to speak, then Michael, I see.
I swear my last, unless I get asked anything else. The, the difference that we're speaking about here is that, on the one hand, substantially below grade finished or unfinished space does not count as ground cover. It's not the space that's beneath the deck that counts for ground cover, it's the deck portion that sits over it that counts for ground cover.
So, so that was my question. Can I ask Marcus a question?
Sure.
So, can you step just that way?
Yeah, sure.
So they take the decking boards off, does that solve the problem for you? Can the joist remain?
What's that?
Can the floor joist, can the joist remain?
As long as they don't accept the boards after, as long as the deck never goes back, it's fine.
So, now that, this is really coming back, this is a long time ago. They take the decking boards off, it doesn't count.
Yeah.
Seems to solve the problem very easily and save everybody, save, I think it would save all this work.
Not unless you wanna walk out on your deck. Yeah, but I agree.
I'm not so sure about that.
But, but, you know, that, like I said, common sense means prevail, that is the, yes, that, here's the problem in terms of what Marcus is talking about, that's the sill, you know, one silliest thing I've heard of, you know, why, why would you do that? You know, someone's gonna kill themselves in that scenario. And the two, I, I disagree that it's necessarily the, the deck that counts as ground cover. Again, like I said, you know, we all know what this is initially drafted for. It's for the deck that comes out off the second floor, that's above the first floor enclosed space, which by the way, already counts for ground cover, so why does the deck above it count for ground cover? I mean, it's, it's to avoid someone saying, look, I'm standing on a second floor deck, I don't count towards ground cover.
It's not the second floor deck that counts, it's the second floor of living space that counts, if it's above the deck, and that's exactly what you've done in reverse, it's underneath. So in other words, I'm sitting and looking up and studying up-down, and I've created more ground cover.
And, and by the way, I, you know, I agree with what you just said, that it's the living space, which is the opposite of what Marcus just said, he said it's the deck that counts as ground cover. So it's substantially below grade, a substantially below grade feature, and, and so it fits, you know, but, but the fact that the deck counts for the ground cover, I don't, I actually don't think it fits.
But that's what it says. It says a deck.
Decks and unenclosed porches not over or under.
So if a deck is over an, an enclosed interior space, the deck. So if a deck is over an, an enclosed interior space, the deck counts. That's what it says.
Except for the fact that it's...
That's, in essence, goes to what you're saying, too. The deck counts when there's something above it and not the above ground sp, I mean, it's how you parse it, but that's exactly what we have here. The deck counts because there's something under it. It'd be the same as the deck counts because there's something over it.
And I don't think it matters, really, whether it's substantially below or whether it's, it says if it's over an enclosed interior space.
Yeah, you know, I don't think that's the case. In other words, again, in other words, if you have, if you have ten square feet of deck under a hundred, under, sorry, under, what are you talking about, second floor, like, cantilevered, etc., right? If you have ten square feet of deck underneath that structure, that's a hundred square feet? You don't have ten square feet of ground cover, you have a hundred square feet of ground cover. That already counts. So the, the point is, it's to exclude decks, right? The exclusion is for decks, period. But what's added to that is decks over or under and enclosed interior space. And the reason for that is so that there's not some loophole for, for having someone stand over the, the first floor structure. That's what that's for. There's no doubt about the fact that, that if you have a below grade structure, right, let's protect, let's say it's not substantially below grade, let's say it's below grade. I only, Marcus would disagree that that doesn't count. Those have, those are all the way out. You stick a deck over it, you're telling me it's ground cover all of a sudden? I don't, my point is, it's not the intent of the bylaw. It's not what it's made for.
I don't think the intent of the bylaw is either to let the building creep ever outward underground, so, I mean, if we want to talk about the intent of the bylaw.
But, I mean, but I think you could, apparently unless you stick a deck over it.
Apparently, which makes no sense.
This is a term.
Wait, wait one second.
Wasn't the intent of the bylaw change to help this application?
Yes. Yeah. It was the intent.
Yeah.
Why, which begs another question, why you go to, you know, the town meeting as to help, anyway, that's, that's needed.
That's what we've done with, that's what they did with sheds, that's what they did with, you know, the bay windows and bow windows and all those things, they were specific.
The gazebo.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Collins?
We're going to be talking about gazebo a little later. Go ahead.
Excuse me, Colin, I'm not representing the applicant or any of the other here, but I am the president of the bar association, and I did participate in the drafting of this in some of the, you know, of the public hearings, and so I'd just like to speak in that capacity. The, what Mr. Bodett is saying is exactly what the town spent months and months and months working on. His suggested interpretation was that it had public meetings over and over again and passed at town meeting, not for this application, but for dozens and dozens of times where this issue had come up and everybody rolled their eyes and says, why does my deck suddenly count as ground cover? Because it's something invisible underneath it. And that's what we have here. And this bylaw change was intended to address exactly this situation, not this application, but this, although it was, this was the last one in a long line of these kinds of applications. So I would urge you to, to take the interpretation and the intent that was passed at town meeting, that this change is supposed to address this exact situation, that a deck that has something invisible underneath it is not supposed to suddenly count as ground cover because of that below grade space. You know, I could, I, I spent, I don't know, ten hours of public meetings where you could go and look at what was discussed, that this was supposed to mean.
All right. I mean, well, what were you trying to, what was your point about, I mean, if you spent all this time at town meeting and maybe it wasn't written quite as clearly as we wanted, we should be able to get our heads around it and move on in life? I'm good with that.
You're good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll move that we make a finding that, that the thirty-two point four, thirty-two point...
Six.
Six-four square feet portion of the former bulkhead, now wine cellar, is substantially underground and does not count toward ground cover and is in keeping with the spirit of the zoning bylaw. This is for fourteen Woodhull Road.
Or is it a relief required?
Finding.
And therefore there's no relief required.
And there's no relief required, correct? Does not count as...
This is actually an appeal.
Yeah, so I think we either have to uphold Marcus or overturn Marcus, if you will.
Okay.
I don't think we're making a finding here, correct?
I moved that...
Go ahead, Leslie.
I think there's two parts that you should make. One, that you overturn the interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer, that's the direction that you're going. And two, further finding that no relief is necessary.
All right. I move that we overturn the ruling of the zoning enforcement officer and make a finding that no relief is necessary.
Let's do two things, because normally we like to vote in the affirmative. So I think the motion wants to be that we want to uphold the appeal, and then we can vote accordingly. But we don't normally...
Okay. Correct?
You can use the other vote.
I don't think so.
Because if you vote to uphold and you get four votes against, all you've done is defeat the motion. If you vote to overturn and you get four votes in favor, you voted in the affirmative.
Okay. Makes, nothing's making sense to me today, so I can go with either one. So we'll go with Michael's motion to...
To move that we overturn the ruling of the zoning enforcement officer relative to the square footage increase at fourteen Woodhull Road.
With the additional language about the finding.
But we had to vote on that first.
Do we have to take two different votes on the finding?
You do it together.
We can do it together.
And make a finding that the underground wine cellar covered by a deck does not count as ground cover.
Okay. Does somebody want to second that?
Full second.
Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, so four to one.
Ah, I told you, you have help.
Jeffrey Sun. All right, so we need to vote probably on twenty-four dash fourteen Morrison, Morrison Rosberg as trustees, and seven J.C. Lane Trust. They want to withdraw without prejudice. Am I correct, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
So, will somebody make that motion?
Someone.
Seconded. I guess I should ask, is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak about that? No. All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, what happened to eighty-five thirteen?
That was just me late in the morning.
Yeah, you, you needed an updated agenda. Okay, now we're on to new business. Twenty dash fourteen, Aaron M. Lenberg is trustee of the Ten Million Drive Realty Trust, is owner, and Poullet de Boll LLC is applicant.
That's continued.
Oh, yeah, that's continued. That's the bold, is that the bold lettering? It says continued. I got that now. Thirty-one dash fourteen, Olaf Plank, thirty-year-old road for the applicant.
So same thing, the definition, Eleanor, it's wrong in our staff report, so it's this one.
Okay. Stephen, you're up, I think.
Chairman, I first want to express my appreciation of the zoning enforcement officer that he diligently enforces the bylaw coming here. I complained about it and asked you to overturn him, but it's nothing personal. In this case, my client has built, had bought a, bought a lot that has a house on it and then built a pool with an open air cabana, or which has been labeled, I don't know if it's a plan as a cabana, but I would suggest that it is either a porch or a gazebo, and I'll get, get into that in a second, and then would also like to build a garage. When he tried to close out the premise for a renovation that was done to the house and for the pool cabana, the zoning enforcement officer determined that the cabana should be counted a hundred percent towards ground cover as opposed to, to say, a very small portion of it. And I'll run through the details in a second. And if that's true, then he doesn't have the ground cover to build the garage, so that the application for the garage was, was denied. And so we're basically talking about, and I don't know if you've looked at the photograph in your picture, in the filing, but this structure is entirely open on all sides except essentially in the corners where the posts are, and then there's a chimney, so obviously the chimney, which itself doesn't count towards ground cover, creates a small wall, and then there's one wall on one side, which is the bathroom. The zoning code does not define the term porch or deck or gazebo or any of these things, but as you probably know, the town meeting recently exempted gazebo as ground cover. So either a porch or gazebo is exempt from ground cover. The main issue in this case is whether or not this is a porch or gazebo or something else that would count towards ground cover. If you look at the common definitions and dictionary definitions, a porch is generally an open air structure that is attached to something else. And in this case, you have a, it's a fifty-four square foot bathroom, this enclosed area, that would be agreed counts towards ground cover. And then there's a six-hundred square foot open cabana, that's basically a roof with some support.
Does the cabana sit on a foundation?
It's pool decking. It doesn't have like a, like a board foundation or anything, but there's a, the pool decking runs by the reason.
There's not a foundation on any of that structure?
Well, there's probably footings under the posts, but they, if you look at the pictures, there's almost no walls. I don't know.
What's the, what's the floor? Is it a tile floor?
I think it's bluestone. I don't, I haven't been out there. Yeah, it, it, the pool decking sort of runs through it. I don't know if you can tell from the picture.
Yeah, it's just bluestone.
Yeah. So...
So it says...
If the bathroom is an enclosed building and that fifty-four grand square feet ground cover counts, which we'd say it does, everything else hanging off it is open air, is just a porch. And this commission actually found, two years ago, the, in the same exact situation at five Chestnut Street, that that was the case. It was a very small, uh, house building about a hundred and fifty square feet, and it had a three or four hundred square foot deck coming off it, porch coming off of it that was semi-enclosed, and the commission, the zoning board revealed, found that that did not count towards ground cover because it was a porch, even though the porch was substantially larger than the building it was attached to. I, I don't know that you have to determine that it's a gazebo, that it's a porch, because I think the change in the bylaw would allow you to also determine that it's a gazebo. And I think either way, it works. It could be a gazebo that has attached to it a bathroom that would count as ground cover. And my discussions with the zoning enforcement officer, he suggested that a gazebo is only this sort of octagonal, white-painted lattice thing that you might see in Mary Poppins or Hopp Island, but not necessarily on Nantucket. There's probably two or three of them on Nantucket that are grandfathered, but you couldn't get a permit from the HCC to build one in almost any location on Nantucket. The design of a gazebo, or the materials of the gazebo, or the, you know, I don't think of the controlling things. The controlling factor for gazebo is, does it serve, is it, is it essentially an open space structure? And then also, you know, the zoning enforcement officer suggested to me that just having some open spaces doesn't do it. You could have something else that would count over ground cover. And I would agree with that. If you have a shed or a garage or some other building that is a decline term under the Nantucket zoning bylaw, and you just have some small nominal opening in it, that wouldn't cut it. You know, having a, having a hole in your shed doesn't, doesn't do it. But in this case, you have almost no walls at all. It, this, I think, is the quintessential Nantucket architectural version of a gazebo. It is, the only use for it is passive recreation and viewing. You just sit there in it. There's no storage in it, there's nothing, you know, there's a barbecue pit in it, but that doesn't, I think, do anything to it. It's not an enclosed, it's not enclosed, it's not interior space, it's not storage space, it doesn't fall under any of the other definitions. So I'd ask you to determine that this structure is either a porch off of the bathroom or a gazebo with an attached bathroom, and that the substantially open portion of the building does not count as ground cover.
Thank you.
And I'm asking for that either as a determination or as a variance under the definition, because, uh, uh, under those terms of gazebo and porch, because they're not defined terms.
Uh, are those big openings, Steve? Rollers, shutters, or screens, anything like that?
Yep, yep.
But you do have a little kitchen in there.
There's a little, I would call it a kitchen, but there's a little barbecue pit.
Yeah, it says, is it?
It's got dishwasher, same grill.
Dishwasher, pantry, is what it says?
Yeah. Um, under the health code, because a kitchen is generally something that has a stove, but...
Oven. I think it has to have an oven.
Right. We don't have that, but regardless, it has a cooking facility, but I don't, if you had a gazebo in the way that Mr. Silverstein describes it, and you put all these things in there, I don't think that would change it. Nor would, nor would it change it if you had a porch in a more traditional sense coming off a house. Putting a, putting these things in it doesn't impact it, doesn't change whether or not it's a porch.
I was going to say, the only gazebo I've been in on this island had like a bar in it with a sink and a refrigerator and...
At the tavern?
No, no, no. Oh, no, that's true, I guess that does too, doesn't it?
There's one at the airport, too.
Right, well, this is the one at the airport. Yeah, that has like...
Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars worth.
This is the private residence, I just didn't think. That was good, when I walked right into it, didn't I?
Having, having a well-pricked-out gazebo is not a problem.
All right, let's hear from Marcus on this.
Before I start, I have to make him and Ruth object to Mr. Cohen's representation. I have never used the term Mary Poppins when I was in the conversation. The bylaw does not exempt unenclosed structures. The bylaw for ground cover is the horizontal area of a lot covered at grade by structures together with those portions of any overhangs which contain enclosed interior space. And then there's a list of structures that are exempted from that consideration. But there is no blanket, if it's unenclosed, it doesn't count. Moving on, a porch and gazebo are not known to be, have never been considered by anyone I've ever met, to be umbrella terms for unenclosed spaces or any such thing like that. A porch is an appendage to a building. To call this, this structure a porch is to say that the principal structure in this area is an outhouse with an incredibly large porch and kitchen in it, or not kitchen in it, whatever you want to call it, fireplace, et cetera, et cetera. Call this a gazebo is to basically undermine the common general idea as to what we all understand gazebo to be. If everyone in this room closed their eyes, they said the word gazebo, the same or similar type of structure would come in everybody's mind without fail, and it certainly would not be this. Whether it is square, there are some square ones, you even saw one recently, we'll get to that in a bit, but generally they're hexagonal, octagonal, if it's square, it'd be whatever. They're generally raised on a platform, they're roof covered, and they can have knee walls, et cetera. But in general, everybody knows what a gazebo is. And in light of the fact that the planning board and town meeting subsequently approved the structure known as gazebo for exemption from ground cover, makes it all the more important that we all operate from the exact same definition or general idea as to what a gazebo is. It's critical, it is fundamental to do it that way, or else it's just chaos. Anything could be a gazebo if all you do is come in and want some more ground cover. You can, potentially, everything excepted dwelling could be renamed a gazebo and poof, you got new ground cover. In the absence of a definition, the common understanding, this has been repeatedly put through Land Court, the common definition and understanding of the phrase is what comes into play. Moving on, the staff report says that it is clear, the intent of the bylaw in votes at recent town meetings to change the definition of ground cover clearly seek to exempt open air porches, gazebos, and other similar structures. The only way that's clear is if open air porches and other similar structures were part of the change. The only thing that was proposed by the planning board to town meeting, and the only thing that was approved at town meeting, was a gazebo, not open air porches. Not open air porches, porches are not standalone anyway, and unenclosed porches already receive ground cover exemption. Secondly, the staff report also references, unfortunately didn't mention five Chestnut, and I flat out forgot about it, so I didn't look that up, but did mention issues in zero three three dash one two and the more recent zero one two dash fourteen. Put together what those structures are. Zero three three dash one two, this is the top one, and I have to grudgingly stand here and admit that...
Thank you.
That I believe the board actually made, the question in this case was where the little man is standing, whether or not that was part of the ground cover or not. Grudgingly, I accept that the board made the proper call in that issue. Now, the next one, zero one dash one four, I'm not, I didn't look at the file and I have no idea which case the board based their idea that gazebo was not a, did not count for ground cover. However, fact of the matter is, it's a moot point because gazebo's do not count for ground cover as a town meeting. This is a gazebo before you. If anyone can tell me that, I don't have an end to that, but that this structure here is in any way analogous to those two structures, they would be analogous in the same way that, I don't know, pile driver is to a ball peen hammer, or maybe a steam shovel to a spade.
I agree, it's the same thing.
But in this one...
Same thing. So if the board here conditioned that only work could be done with hand tools, which is commonly being here to say that a hammer is a hand tool and a pile driver is a hammer, so we can use pile drivers.
So what, excuse me, what's the difference in this thirty-three twelve? Looks like part of it's enclosed and part of it isn't.
Well, the difference being that this can reasonably be called a porch.
Right. It's only this porch, it's only this corner here.
That's the only portion that counts.
Since there is no definition of gazebo in the bylaw, I went and looked it up online, I mean, and the definition of a gazebo in, is this Merriam-Webster's dictionary, they still make those? A roofed structure that offers an open view of the surrounding area, typically used for relaxation or entertainment. A structure as an open or lattice-worked pavilion or summer house built on site that provides an attractive view. A small building in a garden or park that is open on all sides.
I would also direct you to take a peek at the images that are contained in that condition. And you'll see, there's very little question as to what makes up a gazebo.
I think one of the things that I'm having trouble with is the one, one wall is completely closed, right? The one that has the bathroom and the kit, the barbecue, the grill and kitchen, fridge, not fridge side, dishwasher.
If you look at the...
One of the pictures...
Yeah, that's that wall.
Right.
This is the bathroom.
Right.
And the shower, and then there's a window, but it's a hole, it's not, it's not blasted.
Okay.
So there's no wall that's entirely enclosed, although that's the least. I mean, obviously, on the side you have it, that opening, and here, this is all, and here could be some posts, that's the bathroom.
Right, so this, though, like, if you're, if you're in here, like, it's... On the side, right, on the, there are two walls like this, and then the little, then the rock wall, right? So it's...
Right, right.
You didn't say it.
Moving on, I see that once again, the planning board is here challenging another decision of zoning enforcement. It was not pretty to the June ninth hearing, there's no video and whatnot, so I don't know what they discussed. I assume it's going to have to do with the intent of the change. So what I did was went through each of the several meetings that they did hold to discuss And in case the board wants, for some reason, to continue the hearing and whatnot and take a look for themselves, I provided helpful instructions on how to locate the videos of the man on the town website and the start and finish times of each of the discussions pertaining to Article sixty-eight. I note that in absolutely none of them, did the portion of the gazebo get mentioned at all. It was not discussed. The only, only discussion at any point in a less than fifteen minutes' worth of discussion across four meetings had strictly to do with the change that went in that we just discussed in the fourteen-year hollow. So if there was an intent to make gazebo into an umbrella language that would exclude anything that was open, that intent remained solely with the planning board itself. The public would have no way of knowing that. Anybody reading the article prior to town meeting would see gazebo, would understand what it talked about, and move on from there. There was no discussion at town meeting about any articles, in fact, let alone Article sixty-eight. There was no deliberation whatsoever on what the meaning or the intent of excluding gazebo's was, only the addition of gazebo as an exempt structure. This structure was proposed to the HCC and approved by the HCC as a pool cabana. The structure was proposed for a building permit and approved as such as a, as a pool cabana. And to my knowledge, it only became not a pool cabana when this article appeared. So say this is a porch.
What was that?
What's that?
In what article?
Article sixty-eight. Whatever you want to call it, this is not a porch, this is not a gazebo. We're all associated with the trades in one way or the other. We all know what these terms mean. Without definitions that spell out every single one of them, if we allow just any whim or any reading to change what we already know to be true, then this thing becomes virtually unenforceable. And I would add as a final point, there is nothing that says that a gazebo cannot be screened or glassed in, and the bylaw does not specify it has to be an open gazebo. If it's a gazebo, it's exempt from ground cover. So this structure, if it's a gazebo, could be completely enclosed and it does not count as ground cover. There is no possible way this was the intent of the bylaw, was to allow people to get ground cover that they have no right to. I don't know that's for certain. In fact, what happened was the CO was denied pending a revised ASB show in the total ground cover. And then the building permit was held until we had those numbers. But at any rate...
Why, why wouldn't you, I'm just curious, they have excess ground cover, so why couldn't you just, did they amend their building permit application to say, oh, we only want to count fifty-four square feet as ground cover?
The ASB came in, only the fifty-four feet of the toilet was...
Noted.
Yeah, that was, that was on the application as well.
Well, the application is confusing.
It is confusing. I would also add that when I approved that application, I was including the total ground cover.
Well, that's what it looks like here.
Well, it's the total ground cover on the application.
Yeah, it's, it's a little squirrely on the application because the application is for, I believe, just the fifty-four suite and the forty-four square feet, and Marcus approved it with a notation that we didn't know about until we went back. We picked up the building permit, and he's got a notation on there.
Well, what I'm looking at, you, the applicant has listed the total ground cover as thirty-five forty-five, which includes the...
Here's the application, right here, where it says, open air cabana, six eighty-four square feet, with bathroom, ground cover equals fifty-four square feet. So we were telling the building commissioner how big the structure is, but that we were officially asserting.
What's the date on that?
Received December twenty-seventh.
Yeah, what about on page three, where it lists the total ground cover? You've listed the...
Six eighty-four.
Six eighty-four square feet, parenthetical, bathroom, ground cover equals fifty-four square feet.
That doesn't, that, we're happy that the bathroom is only fifty-four square feet, but that you said in the total it was thirty-five forty-five, you're counting it all as ground cover. I don't think putting the bathroom square footage in parentheses, you know, makes it very clear that that's all you wanted to count, because you counted it as ground cover right here, six ninety, six eighty-four. And that's what was permitted.
And it says...
And then you, you, you parent that... Unfortunately, this thing goes crazy when you tilt it, but, and it's always upside down, so you have to read it sideways, but it's on page, it would be the, I believe, the third page of the application, underground cover.
Yeah, mine's, mine's turning.
Look at that.
Clarify, too, cabanas are not exempt from ground cover.
Right, and it says it's a cabana.
So it was always going to be exempt.
Right, and it was applied for as a cabana, so it was permitted as a cabana.
I would, I, I think that that is a little bit of a red herring. It doesn't matter what you call it, a cabana is also not a defined term, it's a commonly used term, but all that matters is what it actually qualifies for now under the current zoning code. And, you know, and if, the building permit application, I guess that you don't read it the same way it was intended to when it was filled out, but the issue before you, I think, is only whether or not this qualifies as A, a porch, or B, a gazebo. And I think it qualifies essentially as both. I, I think that the zoning officer said that a gazebo can be any shape, and this is a rectangle, and the zoning officer said that it's supposed to be, you know, basically an open-air building that's used for passive recreational use, that's what this is used for. I don't, I understand what about this doesn't qualify.
It's not on a platform, for one.
Okay, so where is that in the bylaw or the definition?
But I don't think the bylaw defines gazebo.
So, so Mr. Silverstein's suggestion is that if you have a, is this all of a sudden a bright line rule that a gazebo that doesn't have stairs is, is not a gazebo, and that's what we're basing ground cover on, whether or not it has stairs? I'm fairly shocked by that suggestion.
Fairly shocked.
Fairly shocked.
Not completely shocked.
So I would even go with substantially shocked.
Substantially...
I know, it's a combination. Shock gets your shock.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand what the, what, why this structure doesn't qualify under his definition, except that it doesn't appear to have stairs, it's not a raised platform. I don't know where that's such a bright line test for what's a gazebo or not a gazebo. And in fact, frankly, I'm surprised that he thinks that you do have a more octagonal gazebo on a, on a platform that you can suddenly enclose the thing and then it wouldn't count. That seems, you know, I'd be happy to cut out that piece, that, that testimony and use that with all my clients who would like an additional free house.
No, it would count.
No, he said it wouldn't.
If you label it as a gazebo with the five bedrooms and stuff.
The label isn't what matters.
Right, you can label it whatever you want to, but it's what it...
That is the problem. You fundament, you cannot label it whatever you want to. You could take, under Mr. Cohen's understanding, because it's, it's not what it is, it's just whatever you want it to be.
Well, I'm saying you can label it whatever you want to, but it doesn't make it...
Right, oh, sorry.
It doesn't make it, you know, something different than what it is.
So long as you don't park your, your vehicles in your garage, you could, under Mr. Cohen's interpretation, come in, change the use to a gazebo, and you've got additional ground cover. Ruling here, if we cannot state that we all understand what a gazebo is when we look at it, and that we know what a gazebo is, then this just blew a hole in the ground cover restrictions in the town and county.
I, I think Mr. Silverstein is right. If you take the garage and you remove enough of the walls and use it for...
I didn't say that. Thanks for the words, but I didn't say that.
Hey, Marcus, Marcus, Marcus.
If you do something, then it's a gazebo, and if you do other things, then it's not. You know, a garage is a divine term, it's where you park your car. A shed is something you store things in, you know, you could turn your garage into a big shed if you want to. Those are defined terms. What we have here is essentially four posts, a chimney, and a bathroom, and a roof. There is, there is, I don't understand them, it is clearly either a large porch off of a very small house building, which this commission found was fine only two years ago, and I think all of you were actually sitting on the five Chestnut Street case.
It's just pretty clear, by the way, Kim's not sitting.
Right, okay. I think that it's either a very large porch off a very small house building, or it is a gazebo with a small house building attached to it.
So, since it's not defined in the bylaw, going by our, like, our common, you know, when I close my eyes and think of a gazebo and the definition from the dictionary, I'm having trouble getting to this being a gazebo because it doesn't, you know, gazebo, in my understanding and what I think the definition was saying, is an unobstructed view or even a majority view. I think you've got this giant fireplace, each corner, it's not just a post, it's a pretty significant cutting off the corner, and, and then you've got this other wall, which, okay, has a window that has a cutout, but that's, that's, you know, I mean, that's one whole wall that isn't a view. So I don't, I'm having a hard time getting, getting to this being gazebo, and I, and I, I see...
Any gazebo is gonna have...
I don't see it being a porch either. I mean, it's more of its own...
It seems to be stretching.
It's a cabana, like, I don't, it's...
It's large, and I think really the only issue here...
But it's not just that it's large, Steve, it's that it's got, it's got a big table in it with four chairs, I mean, it's got, it's got the, it's got this giant fireplace, you know, I, I mean, it's got a great view out to the pool, but it, you know, it's, I don't, I don't see it being a gazebo. It has, it's, and I, and I, I don't really see it being a porch either. But that's, I'm a person, so...
I think if this isn't, I don't know what is in any way that's...
I think if it didn't have these big, the big corner walls, I think if the fireplace was a little less substantial, and I think if, even if maybe the wall that was over the pantry, like, not where the shower is, but like, if that wall was even open, like, I get like the shower and the bathroom you want to have, but, I mean...
We could, we could take out some of that handling if it needed to be slightly more open.
Let's not go there.
So, I don't know, that's, I just think like the, the gazebo's sort of open all the way around.
Let's go to the audience first, see if anybody's... Is there any in the audience who wants to speak about this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning board did vote to support the applicant's...
Mark, Marcus.
To support the applicant's position on this. And the zoning enforcement officer sort of makes light of the planning board and their recommendation. The zoning act and the zoning bylaw specifically requires that the zoning board of appeals refer their applications to the planning board for comment. So it's well within their right to make comments on that application. Whether or not you consider those, is, you know, your opinion to do that or not. And the planning board is the local regulatory body to bring changes forward to town meeting. So I think, you know, their opinion on zoning matters because they do craft the articles that go into the town meeting, shouldn't be made by them. On the other hand, I think, you know, this issue is sort of getting down to a matter of semantics, gazebo, open porch, what is it? But I, I think what the board should really be considering is the impact. Does the open portion of this structure have the same impact as a gazebo or an unenclosed porch, or does it have a different type of impact? I think whether you call it a cabana, whether you call it a gazebo or call it an open porch is somewhat irrelevant. I think it's, is the impact the same as what is excluded from ground cover in the bylaw, or is the impact different? And I would argue that the impact is the same as an unenclosed porch or a gazebo. So on behalf of the planning board, I ask that you consider this to be excluded from ground cover, with the exception of the fifty-four square foot portion that is clearly structured and grounded.
And then we're, so then we're, we're determining that this is a gazebo by doing that?
I don't even think you necessarily need to determine if it's a gazebo or if it's an open porch. I think the determination would be that the, whatever much it is, five hundred ninety or however much square feet of this building does not count towards ground cover, much like a porch on a dwelling unit would not count towards ground cover.
I mean, arguably, Leslie, you could flip that argument about impact here. This is a big building, it's got multiple sitting areas, it's got a fireplace, it's got cooking facilities, I mean, it has virtually the same impact as a house, other than maybe a bed.
I mean, if we're, right, if we're calling it a gazebo and you could close it in, that you could have people stay overnight here, there's a bathroom, there's a shower, there's a dishwasher, a sink, pantry, it looks like a refrigerator... a dishwasher, a sink, pantry, it looks like a refrigerator, like, how does that, that takes, that's not a gazebo.
No, I think the idea of a gazebo is you go, you sit, you look at the view, you take the air, whatever, you hear the, and the band stand, band could get up on the gazebo, you could listen to them. I don't quite see this as, unless there's a band that goes with it, and they're in there playing.
There, there could be.
It's many pieces.
I mean, I just, I think that this opens the door for a lot of, I, I just, I just think this is a slippery slope to say that this wouldn't count for ground cover.
Yeah, because I agree with you, except the problem is, is that the openness is in the bylaw, not in my client's, um, actions here. The, the bylaw doesn't say cabanas of a certain size, or open-air portions of a certain size, which is why this board only two years ago in the Five Chestnut Street decision allowed a, oh, a porch on a, that was four times as large as the building it was attached to.
Where does it exclude open-air cabanas?
No, you don't, gazebos or porches. A, a, a cabana is not a defined term.
I think we're stretching here, the gazebo slash porch.
And I think, I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off, but I think you came in with this after the, I, I think it was termed a cabana, and it seemed like it, in the application, like it was gonna be counted towards ground cover, and then the thing changed, and it seemed like there might be an opportunity to get some extra ground cover. I don't think it was.
Marcus, you got one more comment here?
Yeah, I have to go on the record. I do not understand how my comments about the planning board's, uh, involvement were me taking it lightly. I do not take it lightly. The point I made was, if they were, they're throwing their considerable weight behind the impalement in this matter, and in fact, the gazebo addition to the ground cover exemption received no deliberation by that board whatsoever. That's not to be made light of, that's actually pretty critical to this, to the story. And also, this idea that it doesn't matter what it's called, it's only the impact, we do not calculate ground cover based on impact. We calculate ground cover based on it being a structure, calculating the horizontal area that it created, including any overhangs, uh, overrun, all right, that's how it's, and, and if you are to be exempt from that consideration, then it absolutely does matter what it's called. In this case, a gazebo is exempt. This, I do not believe is a gazebo.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Sure.
I'm trying to figure out the ground cover here, you've got a lot of ground cover coming to you. Why is this a problem? It seems like you're on the ground cover, even if this gazebo, the, whatever we're calling it, is six hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Uh, yeah, that's right. I noted in the application that there's no non-conformity on this structure, but it basically makes a decision as to whether, that six hundred and eighty-four square, square feet is what makes a decision on whether or not you can build the, uh, garage. You wouldn't have enough ground cover to do the garage, but this counts as ground cover.
Well, he'd have enough to do a garage. He'd have six hundred square feet.
No, no.
Thirty-five, tw- forty-one, twenty-four, minus thirty-five, forty-five, you're right, five eighty roughly.
Yeah, what, what, if, the, the sympathy you have for my client for his problem of not having a big enough garage aside, I think what this all comes down to is whether or not this structure, um, falls within the common definition of a porch attached to a building, or, or a gazebo. And I think it falls under both. I think the distinctions are individual, and not in the bylaw, and not, uh, you know, it's very subjective.
All right, Mr. Romero.
I think that, uh, this warrants a site visit, at least for me, and maybe for the entire board, I don't know if that would stem.
I don't.
I agree.
We have.
That's fair.
All right.
Where's Five Chestnut Street? I mean, which, which building was that, and somebody's gonna refresh my memory, 'cause I don't know if I said it, I'll recall what it is.
All right.
As you've seen in your staff reports, the decision that he was referencing, and this is not Mr. Cohen's fault, was one ninety Cliff. I was doing some research, and I found a decision that in our database had not been corrected, and it had an old address. So, he was citing an address that is not, but the decision, the body of decision was saying, he read that decision, as did I, and the decision was pertaining to Cliff Road.
One ninety Cliff.
One ninety Cliff.
What happened?
Marcus gave us that.
Yeah, that's what Marcus has.
That's the stretch, you're gonna make sure.
So, what's the, what's Five Chestnut Street?
I think that was, I'm sorry, that was, I was, it's in the decision, but it's a mistake.
It's a mistake.
Yeah, the address is a mistake.
Speaking of Michael's notion of a, a site visit, we, are we in agreement that makes some sense?
Yes.
Okay? So.
Would you like a, a barbed wire carpet?
But I also wanna see, so what is the building that was approved with the porch five times the size of the structure?
That was the one ninety Cliff you were referring to, that Marcus has given us the, Susan, it's this building.
But, you know, under the bylaw, it could be a hundred times the size of the building it's attached to.
All of this is porch.
You know, inappropriate, then that should be addressed in the bylaw.
Whether it's five times, you'd have to do the math. Check on Stephen. Anyway, so, I think, was that a motion, by the way? Make a viewing? All right, was there a, a second? Is your client okay with the viewing?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, so, to do it, we have to make a time that we can all.
If we're gonna go out as a group, if we can do it one way, if we're gonna go out two at a time, or by ourselves, maybe Mr. Cohen could set up a time where we have like a five-hour window.
We could arrange that through staff.
Okay. So you don't wanna do it as a group?
The question is, it's certain, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's fine with me.
I think it's easier.
It is.
All right, so, that was your motion?
It's a motion.
Was there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so, the motions were made and seconded, it'll hold for viewing, if you will. Uh, so, any further discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Now, having said that.
Yeah.
I am up for reappointment, and if the gods are with us, you'll have to start over again next month. No, I'm kidding. I assume, I, I don't know if I'll be reappointed.
If you're not, you're not rejected. Thank you, Mr. Romero.
All right. I forgot to mention that, I'm sorry.
So, could I?
Somebody could read it, yeah.
Can I ask a question about this O three twelve, three three twelve?
Well, we sort of finished with that, but.
Yeah, I don't remember this one enough, and I would like to read it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm doing my best.
You're gonna get that, too?
Yeah, like, I can't tell time now. Anyway, uh, moving on, thirty-two, thirty-two dash fourteen. Now, who's sitting on this? Let's be clear. There were six of us, if you're honest, that last time, we kept that cleared up.
You're out.
Thirty-two fourteen, Margaret Rammus, trustee of Rammus Real Estate Trust, as owner and she'll be his contract purchaser in Appton Forty-Ninth Street for the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Adam Rutter for the applicant. Um, my client is Sheila B., she's the contract purchaser of seventy-nine Orange Street, and she is requesting a special permit waiver to alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure, um, the structure on the lot, sort of the old man's type of bake shop, in order to convert that structure to a yarn store, and install an apartment in the back third of that building. Um, she is also requesting a special permit waiver to convert the existing garage to a one-bedroom garage, uh, to the extent necessary, and we're also requesting a waiver of six apartments to this system. The existing structures and uses at seventy-nine Orange Street are pre-existing non-conforming in respect to both the use and intensity regulations of the ROH. The main structure housed the man's bake shop, as much as we're all aware, was commercial use, and specifically, sort of acre slash takeout use, um, and this was all in a residential district. It's also, the main structure housing the bake shop is also known performing in respect to setbacks, being as close as zero feet from the side yard, side yard block line. The garage on the locust is also non-conforming in respect to use and to the setbacks, being cited, is currently cited in the Westwood side yard setback. Garage, interestingly, is considered an accessory commercial garage, um, and garages are often first known as residential, but because there's no residents there, it's technically a commercial garage. So, and that, and that, too, is non-conforming, seeing that it's commercial in nature. Um, and these, all these structures and uses are pre-existing adoption of zoning by law. Uh, finally, again, in terms of non-conformities, it's non-conforming in respect to parking, but that's, I'm surprised, um, there's, there are no parking spaces, or obviously parking provided. Um, we did a calculation, we found the existing bakery required seven parking spaces, uh, we figured six employees working at peak shift, and one takeout station, and you need one space for every employee, and you get five spaces, uh, five spaces per takeout station, so that just equals seven. Um, all these spots are grandfathered, it's our opinion that the spots are grandfathered, because all this adopted, was before the adoption of the zoning by law, um, and I'll get to this, but the new uses only require six spaces, so, you know, it's our opinion that parking is a reason necessary, but to the extent that the work fills out of this, we're pressed to do that. Uh, the proposed business, which my client is more than happy to discuss, and further detail for the year-round yarn slash correct store, that will be open seven days a week, um, the hours, closed hours of operation are nine to eight Monday through Saturday, and twelve to five on Sunday. Um, no more than, the three employees at peak shift, and approximately four hundred and forty square feet of rear structure that used to be the bake shop, would like to, like to convert it to, uh, an apartment, convert it to a dwelling in the back there. Closing of the change, all these changes are less non-conforming, because they're going to also be decreasing the amount of traffic and congestion, um, Orange Street, which we know is a very busy residential area. Um, if you recall from years ago, we, with the Parrot Enterprises, we discussed the powers test, um, this is, this is a similar situation, where it's, and the powers test is very, very succinctly described in the staff report, um, there are three prongs to the powers test, and it really governs what you can do to appraise this non-conforming use, and in terms of changing that use. Um, this is a little different than the typical powers test analysis, because the proposed use from a high-intensity bakery takeout that had a lot of traffic and congestion is being converted to a yarn store, and it's, it's a much lower impact use for the main structure. Um, so, and powers test analysis, there, there are three prongs, and the first prong is, does the use reflect the nature and purpose of the use prevailing on the zoning bylaws of effect, when we consider it so? And there, there were historically commercial enterprises in these residential areas, um, who compared, in that sense, like, a yarn store would not be compatible. Um, is there a difference in the quality of character, as well as the degree of use? It's the second prong. And again, we, we think it is more compatible with the character of the neighborhood, because it's a less intense commercial use, fewer vehicle trips, you, less noise, less odor, less, less taxation on the infrastructure. Um, and finally, the question is, is the current, or the third prong, is, is the current use different in effect on the neighborhood? Again, we think that's less non-conforming, because it, well, A, because the intensity is being decreased, and B, because this new, new uses are going to require six parking spaces, whereas, whereas the bakery requires seven, so it's, it's gonna be getting. Um, as you are aware in your package, there are multiple letters of support, letters of opposition. My clients are trying to be sensitive to the use of, um, will also create something that would affect the entire island by adding another year-round low-intensity business downtown, and providing housing as well. My client is available, if you have any questions about the nature of the business, or if you have any questions for me about, you know, the details, any other question.
Go ahead, Mr. Romero.
What makes a determination, uh, a commercial garage? Is it because there was a commercial?
That's right, because there's, because there was never, because there was never a residence there.
Because there was a commercial use on it?
Correct. And that would be changed to a single public lot?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Eleanor gave us before the meeting, I think it was sixty-seven, something like that, more emails that came in between yesterday and today, in support, all in support.
Many of the supporting letters are not abutters. They're, they're, so, I think we gotta hear from any, you know, you certainly have to take some weight to the abutters letters, and not all of them are enthusiastic about it.
Of course, and there are some, there are some abutters who are.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Would you agree that if somebody wanted to open up a bakery there today, they could do it without coming back here?
Absolutely, absolutely, I think, but without, without a doubt, there is, there was none.
All right.
For the, for the code, without, without the exception.
Why don't we go to the, is there anybody else with any questions right now, or?
No, right now.
Should we go to the audience? Let's go to the audience, please. Go ahead, Rota.
Uh, for the record, Rota, I represent the Australian family owners of two Westwood Street, and they are the closest abutters to the proposed conversion of the garage. And the garage, um, and I took some photographs, we're gonna, for the record, the garage that they're proposing, um, to convert to a dwelling is forty inches from my client's property. And may I just enter these into the record?
Sure.
So, just so you can see what we're talking about here, this is the garage.
Cozy. Thank you.
These are some other pictures that I would just like to. So, my clients are not opposed to the conversion of the bakery to the bake shop, we don't have a problem with that. We also don't have a problem with the, uh, proposed apartment.
Rota, maybe you just wanna get us these.
Um, we think that the, uh, that's not an inappropriate use for the, for that building. However, we're strongly opposed to the conversion of the garage to a dwelling. Um, the garage has been used for many years as a garage, and we feel that's the appropriate use to that structure. Altering it, uh, is definitely not in compliance with section one thirty-one, three, two, eight in by law. Um, as you well know, the, um, by law, um, it's very clear on what is, um, appropriate or best, best, or area, and what we're feeling is that this is definitely, uh, in the not best interest, it's not in the best interest of this neighborhood at all, and particularly to people, um, that our bodies do it. Um, in the application, the applicant suggested that there was a four, uh, parking space near the garage on, on, on Westwood Street that could be used for, um, parking. Uh, the space that they referred to definitely doesn't comply with the bylaw requirements law, and it's definitely burdensome and dangerous to have a car parked there, um, which is non-compliance with the bylaw. I reviewed all the letters in the file as of yesterday, um, I did not get the, whatever the additional letters are today. As of yesterday, I went through all the letters in support of this, and I don't believe there were any, possibly one or two, that were, um, abutters or in the neighborhood, but the addresses, and we looked up all the addresses of the people that were listed on them, they weren't neighbors, and they weren't, um, abutters, and they weren't impacted by this. They like a yarn shop, and that's nice, and I think that's fine, but they're not gonna be impacted by this at all. There were seven letters, uh, from abutters and residents that are opposed to this, and I feel very strongly that those are the letters that really should, um, be paid attention to by this board, because these are the people that live in that neighborhood, and are gonna be, um, impacted by this. So, again, we have no problem with the yarn shop, and we have no problem with the apartment in that building, but we're strongly opposed to, um, converting the garage to a dwelling unit. Um, again, it's inches, forty inches away from my client, and this is not in the best of, um, interest of this company at all, as ever these five letters that you received, um, from me letters. So I would thank you, um, for denying that portion of the application.
Thank you. I don't think you meant to give me these, Rota. This is your.
Those are the, those are the plans, if you want.
Of your client's lot? Oh, okay.
Is that an, is there an as-built of, um, the subject property?
Uh, no, just a plan on rent.
This is the only plan on rent? The plan that, you submitted is the only plan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do we know how big that garage is?
Mr. Romero has a question for you.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's for John.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, John, is, is there any, uh, in this application, you may have missed it, there's no plan to go up on the garage?
Correct. There is no plan to go up.
You know this.
There are no structural changes. Um, the exterior is not proposed to be altered in any way, or put into the ground cover little bit, and it's, it's for, at this stage, change of use, not up on.
So the garage wouldn't be lifted up, up the foundation, put under, of any sort?
No, it's not the plan.
As of now.
So you have to come back here?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, I mean, we're fully aware that any alteration made to that garage would require board approval. Right now, not with the use.
How big is it?
Four hundred and thirty square feet.
Do you know the size, the dimensions, anybody know the dimensions?
It's probably roughly twenty by twenty, because it looks pretty square. I think it's four hundred and change. Is there anybody else in the audience who want to talk about this? Go ahead, come on down and identify yourself with the tape, please.
My name is Chris Mitchum and I'm representing Marine Corps Division Three West Over. We're a candy corner from this. And I'd like to speak against the six parking places. We have no problem with there being a yarn shop there. The, that Tuckett Bakery was opened at, I think, six thirty in the morning. They had a block in front of their building, fifteen minute parking, and they had traffic in and out all day long, very busy. If you're aware of Orange Street being a main access out of town and West Over a main access into town. This is a very busy intersection and we don't want to see traffic gummed up with people coming in and out of a parking place. And that Tuckett Bakery had usually about six or seven employees there, some in the kitchen, two or three out of the town. If they never had a problem with their parking, but I think it caused a lot of problems that people using the parking lot quite there at that intersection.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Harry Ostrander, I'm at Two West Over. We've been there for twenty-one years and we've had the bake shop there and we've lived compatibly with that. And as, as Rota said, we have no problem with the yarn shop. But the conversion of the garage is going to be right on top of us. Forty inches isn't very far from our side block. We have no idea how many people would occupy that, Rota. And we had seen that it has potential for having additional noise and other, you know, deleterious aspects to that, that particular place. I think that's all I can say.
Thank you.
I'm Sheila B. and I'm the applicant. And I totally understand where you're coming from, but I feel like the business that I do, if you talk about parking, I'm the employee. And I have been the employee for three years. I, the, the business would be in much less impact than if we opened a bakery, which we certainly should do. We don't want to do it, but we would do it if we couldn't, you know, if I couldn't afford. I don't want to change that, I love that building. I love the history of it. If we could, we would like to bring it back and deserve it. And that's all I can say, I feel like.
How many people would be living in the garage that's going to be converted?
One, two?
One to two?
It's not going to be, you know, I don't want people to hear that we're going to move all of something natural employees in there. It's not the case, we have housing for them. And I would be there, I'm there every day, so they're my neighbors too. And I wouldn't be putting anybody in there that was going to cause craziness because I don't want that. And I don't think my neighbors do either.
So you'd be fine with a condition of not more than two people?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to talk about this one?
Hi, my name is Jim Houghton, I'm the listing broker for the property at Seventy-Nine One Street. But I'm also a resident year round of Orange Street, I live at ninety-six. So it's about ten houses down. And as far as parking goes, if, if any of the patrons of the store want to park, they can park directly in front of my house. It's always open. And as far as creating a couple of downtown year round apartments, I think everybody knows there's a need for that. It's front page news on the Inquirer Mirror. In fact, I guess just this week, the police station was talking about how they're losing their people they've paid all this money to train because they can't find year round employee, employee housing. So I look at it and I, I see an opportunity for this board to be a part of the solution. And I hope you'll take that chance.
Got anybody on the board, any, anybody else? Yes, one more.
My name is Gary Warrow, I'm a pre buyer spring and I'm a patron of Lock. And I did submit a letter, but I don't think I submitted in time for you to get it in the packet. So I would like to distribute it to you, if I may?
Sure.
Basically, it's just a letter of support. And I think that the parking issue is a significant one and I, I'm not an abutter and I don't live in the area. But I do think that the opportunity for people to walk from the downtown area to the, to the location is, is a very attractive one. It will be helpful in the neighborhood. And I think that the lessening of the traffic, as an observer to the bake shop and as, and as an observer to the current parking and traffic situation in terms of the present location of the, of the business, I think it's a, it's a very modest imposition on the neighborhood. And I would hope that you would consider that in terms of the parking. And I also, I also agree that it is downtown loan spaces is very desirable, particularly if it's an affordable situation. And I think that that would be particularly helpful in the configuration of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, one more, Rota.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I'd ask you to please pay attention to the seven letters from the abutters. And to think about who the people are that wrote the letters in support. If you just heard, she's not an abutter. And I, I went through them again yesterday and I, I didn't see any abutters that were supporting this. But if you're inclined to grant this relief and allow the conversion of the garage, we hope you won't. I would ask you that restriction would be for not more than two people and for it to be year round residents.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? I'm having a little bit of a problem getting my head around three units, if you will. Two residential, one commercial.
There's no, there's, I guess, a question I have, Marcus still here?
No.
When you go to convert, you're going to have to provide parking for the, are we being asked to waive the parking for the residential?
Yes.
Yeah, six total.
That's kind of hard to do.
As I said, the bakery had seven spots, but they waived a great part.
Yeah.
And that's, and this is less.
You know, I, I am, I am a thousand percent convinced that a yarn store is a dramatically less intensive use than a bakery. I mean, I go by that yarn store a lot and there's, I can always tell when there's a class going on because that's the only time I see more than two cars there. I have a lot of sympathy for the abutter who is forty inches away. You know, can you create a parking, an off-street parking space in front of where the garage is? It's just a question, it's?
There, there's one present and it's been used historically, but it does not leave the right way. It hasn't, it's been used.
Do the inside spaces, there, there are two spaces inside the garage, are there not?
Well, yeah.
They, they count. I mean, you can park a car there.
I'm not sure what's in the garage if it's still with.
Well, you take the stuff on, you put the car in. I can't park in my garage, but that's a different issue.
All right, so let, let's just look at this, let me ask you another question. If we say, no, you can't do anything with the garage, but keep it a garage. What, what can you do in the garage? Park the car?
You can park the car, where it can be effectively as an help, help building.
Right, okay.
For a commercial activity.
Yeah.
For our yarns, for taking equipment.
But on a plan basis, it effectively supplies two, two spaces. Whether you use them for a car or not, I mean, we can't control that.
Right.
On a plan basis.
Yeah, I know.
You could take the garage down and then there would be spaces available.
Is there a, is there a minimum square footage needing to, to be defined as a living space?
There is.
There is, do, do we know what it is?
No, but my strong suspicion is that you can, that building as it stands today can support two people. Ultimately, that's going to be up to Marcus.
Wonder if, if?
Yeah.
If from, as a compromise, if part of the garage was used, the part closest to the bakery was used as an apartment. And then there was a amount of the garage that would be accessible. You're facing the garage, bakery's there, that part of the garage is used as a dwelling unit. And part of the garage is used accessible by a door and used as storage. So that creates maybe a, I don't know, a ten foot buffer between the dwelling unit side of the garage and your home.
Well, there are plenty of places.
It would be storage.
I think the garage is also very close to the street.
Well, I understand that.
You need to identify yourself if you want to speak only for the tape.
But the garage will stay there.
The garage is there, but even when the bake shop owns part of that garage, it was so close to our house. It killed by the one of those creatures that was what was going on there. And it's in the end of the car, it's very close to the main door.
Well, arguably, your house is very close to the lot line too. I mean, just, you know, there are plenty of places in town where houses are right up to the lot line. So, you know, just because you get there first doesn't mean it's, it's right.
That's not a point. This is what I'm, it has so included in the nearest, in the middle of our house. Okay, it has. And this to me is going backwards, you're putting rental property. So it's very exciting, what we put into our home, we restore your home seventeen fifty-three. And now you run part, rental property and apartment right on top of it. That isn't thoughtful about what we're doing. And this is a historic location, historic locations on that apartment being located.
I'm not sure I agree with you on some of those points, but we don't have to parse it all, I don't think. You know, I, again, I'm having trouble with three units on the property. Where they are, I mean, if, if, if there are two units and one of the units happens to be in the garage or the garage is attached to the other building or?
So you'd be more comfortable with two units than?
I'm talking about one resident, you know, commercial being one of them.
Of course.
Yeah.
You're with the apartment in the back, the commercial, and just leave the garage alone?
It, it works for me.
I'm just, I'm really just my client, so.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, yeah, I'd be more comfortable with the, with two units.
Did you see that on his?
No, I didn't. Somebody else wants to speak?
Hi there, I'm Allison Forsberg and I'm a mider and a long-term resident of Neptunet and real estate broker. And I know that there are several two-family homes in there that have been condo and sold separately, that have little to no parking. And I see the benefit of making an improvement on an old historic building like that as a real expensive undertaking. To go through the HDC and to comply with all of the things that they'll have to comply with in order to change that building or make even any improvements to it is a big expensive deal. So to think that they would put crappy rental units in the building seems pretty far-fetched, you know, to me. I, personally, I said I'd love to have one of the rentals for me, but I already have a house. So I think that, you know, parking aside, it's a much less intensive use, it's a year round use. It's a really beautiful use. And that it be supported by rental income so that it could be, you know, a place that they can afford to maintain is also important. Because, I don't know, a skein of yarn costs anywhere between six and thirty dollars. So imagine trying to cover the mess of your yarn store that everyone loves just selling tiny pieces of yarn. That's all.
Let me ask you a question of the board, does anybody have an issue with the conversion to the yarn store?
No.
No, so we don't have to talk about that one anymore. No, so then it gets down to the residential units, I guess. And the parking, it's, comes along with it. So, but go ahead, we have another board member, I mean?
Can I just point a question first?
Go ahead.
Because you, Ms. Angel Ostra asked about the parking. And the bylaw specifically says, an enlargement of any building or a change in use of a building which increases the parking requirements beyond what currently exists, shall require the provision of off-street parking for the existing building as if it were newly constructed. So if the change of use for this building doesn't increase the parking requirement beyond what was already there, then no parking waiver is needed. And the board would just include that in their decision.
So we're not talking about parking either right now, from what you just said?
If the current population is seven and the new population is six, then no.
I don't think they ever use the seven parking places.
It's not so much use of real, real spaces. This is a calculation that because it was there prior to zoning and because of the calculation, they're technically grandfathered from providing those seven spaces.
I'm sorry, I thought she said under current use.
Well, I think what Leslie said was, if there isn't an intensification of the parking requirement, then we don't have to waive parking, correct? And there's actually, by virtue of this calculation, as to ground cover or space, residential, commercial use is actually a reduction in parking spaces needed. For whatever that's worth.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, sorry, I thought you were going to speak.
That's right.
I was going to say, what, if the garage is not used, is not going to be turned into residential use, what, what's going to happen with it? What would your plan?
I mean, I'll check, but I imagine it'll be used in conjunction with the business.
Or my guess would be, my guess would be garage.
Just stay the way it is.
Again, any type of, any period of change of use would have to come back to the board. I didn't set that. Any alterations, any changes, I'll see you guys again.
Would you like to speak to your client? No, well? By help.
No, yeah, I'll, 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 I'll speak a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll clarify the parking, we don't plan on adding a seven car or six lot, parking lot. I think some, some of the people that wrote in opposition were confused about how the parking stuff works. And I think, you know, we don't plan on adding anything, we'd like to keep it the same. Historically, what's happened, they parked one or two cars, Maggie's car and another car, Frank's car in the garage. And they would pull their truck up alongside the building. When they pulled up along there, there was no, you know, all the big trucks and the, you know, the, there are vans and everything else went back and forth, no problem. So we would, you know, even though they're not quote unquote legal spaces, we would think that those three states of spaces would remain and still be usable. I don't think the idea, you had earlier about, you know, half of it being a garage and half being a dwelling. I don't pick up and work, we would, you know, we would rather have a dwelling there. The reason we were doing this, you and I have a bakery. That would be the smart thing to do if this were investment, would be to put a bakery in and, and repeat what was there. Sheila bikes every single day, she was going, it got too, too cold this winter, so she walked every day. She walked by the building all winter. And every time she? And every time she'd come back to tell me, geez, you know, I really want to own that. That's when I jumped, should be, be ashamed to see that go. I don't want this to have, like, what happened to the 106 man, et cetera, et cetera. And after three or four months, she finally softened me up a little bit. So, and, you know, to soften me up, I was crazy enough to put an offer on it. The only way that we, you know, there's a chance of her being successful is if we have two residential there to help, you know, support her business. So, you know, the idea that we'd like to do is keep it, the, the sound the same, relative the same, have as little impact as we can on the neighbors, especially the neighbors nearby, and, you know, and operate it, have her operate a lower, lower impact good business. And I hope that's all great to do.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Are any comments? Does someone want to make a motion, or does anybody have any?
Um, I, uh, I'm, I'll just make a statement. I'd be in favor of what Mr. Tool said, that, um, retail store, retail yarn store, whatever you'd like to call it, um, with an attached apartment inside the retail, inside the commercial building, and that the garage be left as a garage.
I just want to be clear. I did not say that the garage has to be left as a garage. I don't care, you know, I don't have a, a dog in that fight.
Well, what else could, I mean.
Well, it could be patched, and it could be a bigger apartment. I mean, who knows? I don't know, whatever's only allows you to do, but, uh.
No, I'm saying the garage remains a garage. It is not converted to an apartment.
Well, again. You could do whatever you want. You could take the garage down. It could be a tank, blah, blah, blah. I mean, there's something, unfortunately, we don't have the full picture, obviously, because you haven't gotten there because it's a chicken and egg thing, so I get that.
That's true. Before we go, I strongly recommend just not addressing the garage because as it is, it's a garage. So if it were to ever be converted to a dwelling or altered in any way, we would come back. We would have to come back. There's no, there's no way around that. That's, that's required. I mean, otherwise it would be a violation zone. So it, it at least gives my clients the option to explore other, other possibilities and not have it, you know, stuck as a garage. And then try to, you know, modify a condition over it in the board's decision.
Net, net, you have to come back, whether it's a modification or not. But that's not, I, I was just clearing up. I did not say it had to remain a garage. But if that's Michael's position, that's fine too.
Is that a motion? No, it wasn't yet.
I can only wish. Anybody else?
Well, I, I can think of certain reasons, a couple of reasons why the neighbors would be better off with a house there than a garage. Primarily, if it was a house, it would have to be fireproofed. That wall between the, the neighbor's house and the proposed house, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I, I, I do think that it, that there are all sorts of codes that would need to be met, so the impact on your house would, as Mr. O'Meara said, would probably be net, net better. But again, without having a plan in front of us or for the app, or the neighbors to look at, it's hard to go there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with the garage becoming a dwelling, but I, but I, I agree. I'd like to say, I don't feel very comfortable without having more information.
So do you, do you want to come back with a plan, or do you want us to vote on?
Let me, I took my time for that.
Take a few minutes.
Thirty seconds?
Sure. All right.
I think we'd like to, just like, hate, any, any conversion of use to a garage. I mean, it would make, make like, easy, even withdraw that a, aspect of the application. And so the board would, the board would vote on it, and address it, or something like. That's very good for yarns.
Okay, what's next?
That we would, that we would, once, once we have a better understanding of what could be done with the, with the property, that we would consider moving that.
It's always your right to come back.
Withdrawn the, the garage.
All right, um, so.
That makes it easy then.
Yeah.
What?
All right, I'll.
Was that a comment? Michael? Oh, okay.
Then I'll make a, I'll move that the, um, grant the relief requested in order to change the use of the building from a bakery to a yarn shop with an apartment to be constructed in the back portion of the said building, period. And, um, that.
Will you go over the hours of operation on that application?
And that. To the extent necessary, be, any parking be waived, period.
Nope.
And that the hours of operation.
It was said with nine to eight, Monday, Thursday, and then to twelve to five on Sunday.
So my motion was to allow for the yarn shop, to allow an apartment in the yarn shop, and that's it. And if they want to do anything else with the garage at a future date, they have to come back to the Board of Appeals and get a notice again.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yep.
They're second to that? Michael seconded. Any further discussion? No. All's in favor, say, uh, uh.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, Edwin Hodge, One New Street.
Rota.
Wisconsin.
Rota, do you want this back?
Mark?
Yes.
Where, where's Mark?
I think he's not here today.
Oh, he's here. What happened to Mark?
Do you want these pictures back too, or just next time? We want to save your footprint, pass them on that, that.
He's okay. Well, yeah. He almost choked it, a piece of, sort of, litter. So it's one more thing, two nights. It must have been after you, like.
You're going to sit on the rest of these, right? Well, can't check them out, they're taxed back.
All right. So we're taking a brief break.
I've had, like, protein shakes and stuff. He's eating a swordfish, him. Craps, that's ice cream. You get him, you know, you get him, the stuff my daughter eats, those, like, pouches, the baby pouches. My sister had written, my sister ate, and she has crossbones and stuff, and she always looks like.
Isn't this frostbite in the toes?
And my hands and my nose.
All right, let's do it. Jeffrey, you ready? You've got One New Street, Mark.
I'm excited, let's go.
Now you can't sit on New Street? Will you get Michael back in here, please?
No, I don't want to sit on anything if I'm not being reappointed.
You're going to be reappointed.
You, you lucky snooker, you.
Yeah, there, I don't think there was a, that it's round swirl of, uh.
I'm so, I keep, like, looking at your sweater, I'm so jealous. I'm wrapped up in a sweater.
Yeah, I'm ready to put my hoodie on.
Maybe I should wrap up in my sweater. It's freezing.
We have this meeting outside with, uh-huh.
Like in college? You have your classes outside?
Come on, you're going to be fine. You're going to be reappointed. If you're not, the African, well, we'll just read, well, somebody will read in. Let's go. Otherwise, it's going to be a, a five.
The matter of keeping things moving.
Mr. Johnson, can you, um, please, the Latino matter was continued?
It appears to be continued until July tenth.
Potato.
Mytino, yeah. Sounds good.
I know, it's very good.
Because it'd be kind of, you're a little cooler on the top.
You sound good.
All right, y'all, we're going to get going. Okay, this is thirty-three dash fourteen Edwin N. Hodge, trustee of One New Street, Yildik Trust, One New Street, Wisconsin. What do you have?
What do you have? Goodness gracious, thank you, Joseph Gay, representing Ed Hodge. Uh, the applicant purchased the property at One New Street in December of twenty thirteen. The property is located, um, I think the chair, the person, the property is located in Wisconsin Village at One, uh, New Street. Um, the, the property itself is compliant with all zoning requirements under the SOH District. Um, there has been a pre-existing non-conform use on the property, a retail use, uh, on the property since, uh, prior to the enactment of zoning. Um, I have accompanying materials. There were affidavits that were submitted establishing the, uh, the pre-existing non-conform use. Uh, it was used primarily for, as a sort of art gallery, as a sale, retail sale of, of prints and artwork. The, uh, application before you is for a special permit to expand the use for a portion of that, of the property, uh, to make it, the, the use office. The way the structure, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at the structure itself, but the way the structure is shaking. And this is a larger version of it. It has two retail offices in the front and, and so a office retail in the rear. Um, in the past, the, the, as I say, it was used for art gallery, art sales, prints, and, like, uh, continuously by First Captain Grocer and then Barbara Locke. Uh, and now my client wants to continue that use. He has leased a portion, one, one of the rooms in the front, uh, for purposes of the same type of retail use. Um, previously, the other, uh, smaller, uh, room facing New Street was used by Wayne Welsh, the artist, and my client was, uh, discussing using that, that location as well. Um, and in the rear, the, I give, my client desires of expanding the use, so that could be an office location. Uh, the office location, and I was given the opportunity, Mr. Elton, uh, to disclose that my client is, uh, the intent is to lease that office location to the Wisconsin Trust if this, this board ceases to approve the application. The, uh, the, the change in use is not as significant an impact on, on the, on the, the, uh, pre-existing retail use that has existed. Um, it, it does not result in any change on the front two rooms, which would be seasonal occupation for retail sales. Uh, the, I understand the tenant in the rear intends to be a year-round tenant with one person in the location. Mr. Elton's present, uh, in the room today as well. Uh, the applicant, uh, as I say, is seeking, um, a special permit to, uh, to expand the, uh, the pre-existing retail use, those retail office use. And, um, because of its, of a, uh, the parking issue, there are two spaces on the property itself on site. There's a twelve-by-eighteen parking in the front, and then there is a twenty-by-twenty-six, if not twenty-seven, parking on the side. Uh, to accommodate the, this, this type of use. Um, the, in addition to that New Street, uh, the area that is located in the, sort of a mixed residential, commercial, uh, and there's parking directly in the front of the, of the, of the building itself. The building has seventy-five year frontage, so there's at least two, uh, two or more parking spaces discounting the, the curb cut area for the front parking off of New Street. And there's numerous other parking, uh, off-site parking along New Street, on both sides of New Street, as well as within the building. Um, the act, uh, the activity, the expanded use, uh, it, as I say, it is not more detrimental, uh, doesn't cause greater impact on the, the location itself. And we are in Wisconsin Village, which, uh, is a village center of commercial residential uses. It has real circumstances, it has cafes and packaged stores. Uh, and three doors up from this location is the Chantilly Pavilion. And across the street, a little bit to the, to the right, is the casino. So the applicant is asking if the, the court would grant a special permit to expand the pre-existing facilities to retail offices.
So there were three? This, this rear space was used for retail before as a separate, as, as a separate door?
Or it's just available for it if it needed? Digital calculations with Engineer Dan Malloy and Val Oliver before I arrived here. Um, and as best we could, uh, taking in, uh, the three units of the structure, the commercial parts of the structure, um, we had approximately a fourteen-by-twenty-five in the rear, a seventeen-by-twenty-two on one of the front units, and a fourteen-by-eighteen on the other front unit. Uh, but then each one of those, we had to discount the bathroom space, trying to determine an office space. And, and after going through the calculations with Val Oliver and Dan Malloy, we came up with, uh, a total of eight hundred eighty-three square feet. And if we use the calculation of one, one parking space per, we've got two hundred square feet. Uh, we have four on site, and as I say, there's, there's available parking, but directly in front of the, across the floor is a one.
Like, the plan that we have doesn't show a door going to the exterior. I assume that's just an oversight? There is a door on another plan, the, the existing condition plan, but.
There is a door. I'm assuming you're talking about the door off to the deck? Yeah.
There is a door. And the windows, they're, they're actually going to be there?
Yep.
There is a door, I thought. The garage in the back stays as a garage?
No, that's not, uh, I understand, uh, he's making improvements to that. Um, and it may be a residential, you know, but he's making improvements to that structure. It, right now, it's under construction. All interior. There's no alteration to the exterior either, structure. It, with the exception, there was, I'm sorry, I was getting ready. There was on this, uh, this part of the rear, there was an outdoor shower.
So Joe, would it be safe to say then that, that there are two separate residential units as well as three commercial enterprises encompassed on this plot, on this land?
As it exists right now, uh, when he's completed with his property, yes, there would be three commercial on the first floor of the primary building, front face of New Street. And there is a residential, uh, space above that. And he is, uh, the rear structure, I understand, he is converting from that garage to become that garage apartment.
So the parking would be a total of six spaces required for the uses? Eight hundred square feet of office retail and two residential parking spaces on this lot?
That's the calculation that I was working through with Val Oliver and, and Dan Malloy.
So you're looking for a waiver of parking?
Two spots because of what's available directly in front of, uh, two reasons. Because of what's available directly in front of the structure itself, there's at least two, if not three, spaces parallel parking to the party in front of the structure. Because of what's available directly in front of the structure itself, there's at least two, if not three, spaces, parallel parking to the parkway in front of the structure. There's numerous other parking along New Street as well, offsite. But coupled with the fact that the preference would be, even though there is some area in the rear that they could enlarge that parking.
I see that.
That, at least in my, my client's mind, that, that would not be the, the best result possible for, you know, maintaining the integrity of that, of the area that this building is located in. There are some mature trees back there, and, and the vegetation, including landscaping and whatever, but he could do that, but the preference would be not.
I guess what I don't understand is what parking waiver is currently in place for the uses that are currently on the lot? And the proposed uses, what the difference?
There's only one residential unit, and arguably one commercial unit. That depends on when William Welch may have started to use the residential too, but arguably one and one.
So, we're, uh, I'm, I'm just looking at the special relief required here, and I'm looking for the parking waiver that's being requested. And it's, I'm not seeing an actual request for a parking waiver.
I, I did not put in the actual application. But there, there is the request I am being made to make orally to the board for the two states.
Can you do that Eleanor?
I'm sorry.
Can you change the requested relief, sort of at the meeting and ask for parking relief now? I don't think so.
It has to be in the body of the application.
Yeah, probably.
But the notice, the notice went out.
It did say to the extent necessary.
To the extent necessary, the notice was out.
Well, they might determine if there may be.
Alright, so it said it in the notice.
It said.
There may be park, a parking waiver used in the plan.
Right, I think we need to define it as part of any special permit relief that would, would not be granted today. That's all I'm getting at, is there seems to be, that component needs to be addressed.
Really defined?
As part of this, particularly because of the conversion of a building that isn't even approached in the special permit relief. We don't, we didn't know until now what the total combined uses were in these buildings. And that, so that intensification has taken place based on what improvements he's making now on the site that weren't part, parcel of this application in terms of the description of uses on the lot. So I just want to be clear that when Joe walks out of here with whatever he gets, that he doesn't have to come back for any other clarification.
So are you suggesting you want to calculate all that right now?
I think we just did. It was eight hundred square feet of retail, commercial, and, and two parking spaces required for the dwelling unit, so we said that there had to be six spaces on the lot. And, and Joe's saying there is room for more spaces. Ideally, that's not what they want to do because of mature plantings, but I'm saying, is that something we want to address as part of the intensification that's going on on this lot?
Well, we need to talk about the intensification.
Correct.
Yeah, so we just, we just have a problem going from one unit to three. Now we're going from two units to five.
Right. I want to just make sure that we're clear about that.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's, it's a point of discussion. I don't, I don't think it's nearly the, the area obviously on our street, but it is.
Right. Joe, would any of the tenants in the front building be leasing the cottage in the back? Or is that going to any, any private entity that's available that wants to rent that?
To tell you the truth, my client had shared with me.
Okay.
We expected a residential portion of it, certainly we hoped into that.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, if, so if there were five different tenants basically occupying this property, the parking to me seems not to be enough without there being a bone of contention, particularly on the, on the residential side?
And again, the, 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 the commercial, the retail commercial units, Mr. Welch and, and the other tenants, they're leasing, they're seasonal. The commercial.
Which helps.
If, if the commercial office space in the rear would be earmarked.
Well, parking is a seasonal problem in the residential too.
Right.
And there's a building permit currently in place to convert the garage unit to the.
I believe there is, I'm not part of that, that, that aspect of.
And would that application have needed to show parking?
Yeah. They have to provide a space, right?
I would think so.
So they can't count twice?
They can't count twice, so, well, that was in Mark's calculation, right?
Just that eight hundred square feet of commercial retail calculated two hundred square feet per parking space. No employees, I didn't even calculate employees into that mix.
Well, wouldn't you have to?
Well, that's, I mean, I, I'm saying we need to address the parking as part of this, and there is room to provide more parking on this lot. It may be contrary to the property owner's desire, but there is room.
Do we need to need more information then, because I don't, we don't, do you, do you have, if you're not involved in the garage part, like you want to make sure?
Yeah, you may have another space down on somewhere that's not, you know.
We, we may grant relief that would impact Marcus Silverstein when he was reviewing the, the residential CFO for the new structure that brings him back here under denial of that CFO because the parking calculations don't work anymore.
So maybe, maybe you need to see more information from you.
Is it possible to, to shape the decision relative to the commercial? And, and have the board find that there's additional parking onsite for the, for the commercial? So that the, the use, the retail use as well as the office use, the expanded office use could operate. But I advise my client, as far as the residential, we'd have to go back before the board found that the parking is.
But we don't know how many spaces are already earmarked for the garage, right?
Well, the premise would be if they were doing the conversion from a garage to a residential unit, the premise would be that they're required to put one nine by twenty parking space on that lot. We already have a residential unit above, then we know that two of those spaces out of three, and the third one doesn't look, look like it meets the regulatory statutes for a parking space, are already dedicated to the residential, so we have seventy-five percent of one legal space for the commercial enterprise for three tenants on that space? I'm saying they may need to provide more parking on the lot.
Yeah, if you want to greatly, you know, greatly, I know it's seasonal, it's probably, I know Bob's not gonna be able to drive, and there's hundreds of people, please, or whatnot, but there, you know, there are five units going in there when there used to be two, or maybe three. So I think you have to do a better job of showing us what, what's happening with the parking, and whether or not we, if that, if that's our only sticking point. I mean, if, if, are we okay with putting a third retail slash office? I guess it's just office, it is not retail.
How many people are gonna work in there?
Now, I have a, an assistant who's part-time, basically two part-time people.
I, I don't think.
I don't have any problem with this.
I don't, I don't, I don't either, and I think maybe we might want to continue this to the next month's meeting with clarification. If, if Eleanor thinks it was noticed properly, then we could continue it. If he thinks that there, it was a lack of notice based on this other dwelling unit that's under permit, and it wasn't properly noticed, then we have an issue with re-notification.
They, I think the fact, I was unaware about the garage situation. My understanding was the subdivision was exclusively interested in the change of use of the main structure, or the first floor of the main structure. And Leslie and I looked at, and saw you did not address the parking situation, but we realized that there may, we would probably need to, given recalculation. So I prefer to defer to Leslie, because she has more knowledge. But I think continuing with more information being furnished at the next meeting about the overall use, intensity, et cetera.
Well, if I, if I could ask the board, so it is not too, it was all time sensitive as far as making the office space available, but if I could ask the board, if I propose to create two more lots onsite.
Parking.
Parking, uh, two more, uh, parking onsite. Is that, is that what the board would, would prefer as far as complying with the parking requirements? And not in a vacuum, taking into consideration where this property is located, the integrity of, historical integrity of the area. He has the area, he has the land area, he creates two more parking.
Yeah, it's almost a double lot, so there is room.
Yeah, there's room, and it's, and again, if, if, if it was woefully short of unavailable parking offsite, both directly in front of them, all along New Street, as well as in the village, a block, a little bit block away, you know, then, then I can understand. But there, there is parking available offsite that would definitely more than, you know, compensate for the seasonal business hour use of, of first floor.
So you're proposing you'd like us to vote contingent on, on use applying a new site plan with the two other spaces?
With a total of five spaces?
Yeah, two additional spaces, because one of the spaces is substandard, but it's, I don't have an issue with that. The other two spaces could be dedicated for the commercial enterprise, and the two new spaces dedicated for the dwelling units.
And the new bylaw says you can have one compact car space.
One, exactly, that's why I'm not concerned so much about the undersized space up front.
That one could be a seven by seventeen.
Yeah, or even, you know, whatever it is.
Twelve by eighteen, it's wider, but it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I'm not.
My feeling is that's inadequate among parking without use in that space.
And if they're time-sensitive, we, we need to come up with something that we could hang our hats on. And I think, to me, it's parking, it's not necessarily the intensification of use.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with use.
Alright, so someone make a motion to that effect, and let's move on.
Let's see if I can couch the motion. I'll make a motion to grant the relief, as requested, for the additional use of the, of a third tenant space. Tell me if I'm wrong, for the purposes of an office for one full-time employee. One part-time employee, if we need to kind of, if we need to put that language in there, with the provision that two additional parking spaces onsite will be presented to us in a modified site plan as an exhibit A to support this, this motion.
So showing a total of four full-size parking spaces and one.
One existing compact parking space up front.
I, I do have one other comment on that. Just so we're doing this properly, I mean, are we then, are we blessing the two front spaces as pre-existing?
I, I think there's been a history of those uses ever since I've been out here.
Well, but it's supposed to be before zoning.
I know, but I think there are affidavits in place.
All they say is, they don't, they don't say anything about any dates prior to this, this, that.
Can I give you the history, the chain, the history of, of the ownership?
I'm not talking about the ownership, I'm talking about the use of, you know, it, it was very unclear. I always frankly thought it was one space driving by, I didn't know William Welch was in there, it's sort of this studio slash, I guess you could go in and buy something, but it wasn't set up as a store, I went in it.
Well, it's a storefront, he always had signs on.
He did?
I, I always remember seeing signs, sure.
Retail sales business?
Yeah, on, on Barbara Coffin Lock's side.
That's a good point, but I always, I always made the assumption that William Welch was in there selling paintings and retail on it.
Well, I mean, it was, it was, it was, you know, it was.
I don't live in Wisconsin, so I'm a little blind to the total history of, of that, so I'll have to defer.
Welch's been selling there for several years.
Several? Yeah, okay, but was he selling there prior to zoning? Because isn't that?
William Welch was down on Easy Street for a number of years.
Robert DeRoche owned and operated a retail sales business within the first floor of the building and in the past and present.
One unit, that's what I'm getting at, it was one big unit on the first floor. Then at some point, William Welch, obviously after zoning was enacted, you know, started painting there and, and doing his thing, so. Let's just be clear, we're, we're, are, are we, are, did you even ask us to? You probably didn't, so maybe to move point, we're not necessarily blessing those as, as pre-existing.
If, if I understand, he's often asking for that space in the rear to be used as office space for another tenant. But that's all, all he's asking for, and I'm saying we need some parking associated with.
But arguably, you can't use, you know, you can't have, you can't carve the unit, or can you? I'm asking, let's say you have eight hundred square feet, could you carve it into eight one-hundred-square-foot retail spaces?
No, you'd have one, one tenant leasing the whole space with side leases to other artists that are representing their work in your gallery.
Didn't we have one of these?
I'm just curious, I mean.
Wasn't, we're trying to figure, zero names or something like that too? Because it was one building, they weren't sure what the history of it was, and then I guess we ended up splitting it up into several stores?
So, let me try and amend this motion then. I'll make a motion to grant the special relief required to occupy the rear portion of the first floor of the existing structure as office use with the addition of two legal-sized nine-by-twenty parking spaces associated with the uses intended on the property. That, those uses will include two apartments, a retail application up front, and an office space. How that retail application is implied, I'm just gonna leave that open, because I just don't know the history, and I don't want.
So it's one retail unit and how it actually ends up, but.
As, yeah, I, I don't know how to address its history on the front. But there would be residential unit on the upper level, an office in the back, and a retail space, a retail space up front. In addition to that, a, it's our understanding that the current garage on the property notice on the plan is being converted into dwelling. So there are two dwelling units, one office space, and a retail operation on this property, a retail operation.
Works for me. So, is there a second to that? Every second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just for, for clarity, and I know you were deciding on it, but that plan that shows the two nine-by-twenty, your decision will not be granted or written up without pursuing that site plan as a part of it.
Correct.
And as far as actually moving forward with the creation of those two lots, two parking spaces?
Are you asking us if you have to make, do them?
No, I know, I, I will have to, I just, I have to explain that to my client, there's, there's no.
Well, the, the only thing I see that is if your curb cut on that street is in excess of twenty-three feet wide, you have to go to a special permit to the planning board to request a wider curb cut on that street. So if you cannot configure the parking to our zoning bylaws, you need further relief.
Now, can you probably do it on a plan? Probably, and then, you know.
Yes.
Four spaces on the plan.
Right, I, I, I think so.
Well, we don't want to get in there. Okay, so who's sitting on Mr. Coffin? Oh, you got more clothing?
You got jackets for everybody?
This is not healthy. Alright, so Maitino has been continued without opening. So thirty-five fourteen Kenneth C. Coffin as owner, Christopher B. Lewis as applicant, Eight Flint Road for the applicant.
Mr. Jones, I'm here for the applicant, Christopher B. Lewis, who has been located upstairs. Mr. Lewis is purchasing this property in what was formerly known as the coffee pit. And it's going to be built building that was just a small garage contractor-type area with associated office space and two bedroom apartment next to it. Chris recently had the same configuration of his property on everything way, which is sold, so this is his home away from home. He and his family have partially relocated off of it. Because we're doing this under the RC two zoning freeze that applies for this subdivision, we do need special permit relief, the storage and warehousing, including properly screened open storage of goods and materials for light, for light manufacturing, and for fabrication of component parts for offsite construction use. All of those types of uses are now allowed in that commercial industrial zone, but since we're complying with the old zone, we have to ask for a review. In addition, we're asking waivers under section one thirty-nine eighteen nineteen. In addition, we're asking waivers under Section one thirty-nine eighteen nineteen of twenty to lay strip components with parking and aisle with requirements to waive certain screening regulations, including screening of loading zones within thirty feet of a residential area, only because there's a new apartment upstairs, and to waive strip compliance with the dimensional requirements for off-street loading zones. Since we filed this application, the bylaw has changed. We don't even have to have loading zones unless we decide we have to have loading zones. But anyway, we've got a plan in front of you that shows what he's proposing. I have a full-size copy and we're kind of helpful to look at. The interesting point about this property and one of the reasons why we had a little trouble with fitting in the parking spaces, we have four of them in there and we do have, including a handicap space in the off-street loading zone, is this property is at the very end of-
It's directly, directly above Toscana property.
Exactly.
There's a change in elevation of probably twenty-five feet between there.
At least. Mr. Fair decided he wanted to, someday he could just do it there.
I've thought about it, right around the corner, just outside my office door.
Don't do it.
No, it's amazing.
I often contemplate.
And the top graph lines on that plan, I just realized, go back to two thousand and eight. Because I couldn't quite understand why the property was the way it was on that plan, but when I went out there, you know, you go out there, most of the subdivision is the bottom of the pit.
It's come up though quite a bit since two thousand and eight as well.
But except this area, which, you know, the rear of the lots here and the side of the lots there, you stand there and you literally, you look up, I can't see the Tuscan buildings because they're up so high. And then behind it, which is up probably just as high, if not higher, this is the old area, is the boat area. So you look up, you see two or three stories, probably going up, probably four, you can see into the air.
All right, so it's not an ideal spot, but-
It's not an ideal spot.
It is what it is.
Sure you want to go in? Yeah, he said I can see it.
Pay extra for that, don't you?
Probably. Well, don't get me started on that.
You're protected.
Yeah, I can start. So basically, if you watch the plan, you will see that there are certainly a series of retaining walls that are there. There's a very, very limited area of outdoor storage next to the retaining wall, closest to the restaurant appropriate. It's a small building, it's at the end of the dead-end row of, you know, turning. Parking really shouldn't be an issue for anybody.
All right.
So we would ask that you basically bless this plan to give it a look.
Comments?
The only thing that I think I missed in this red, are you seeking a waiver from any screening?
Not any screening, some screening of the loading zone.
We've got an awful lot of screening, the twenty-five-foot high wall is all good.
Maybe that's what I missed read. Are they complying with the same screening that everyone else is doing?
No, so you're going to have to screen some of it. I mean, I thought, I thought the proposed retaining wall was screening.
I think that the retaining walls would certainly act as a screening.
I don't think so, if you're standing up on the wall, you're going to have to plant forty-foot trees to-
There are trees, oh, trust me, there's vegetation there.
There is trees on the Toscana property.
No, I would think you would have to do the low side, possibly. That's what we've been requiring of everyone else, haven't we?
I think what we did was we gave them-
Six months.
An extra six months to do it after they move in.
Right.
Because your neighbor, when your neighbor builds next door, there's going to be some commotion.
So where would you propose?
One, this is one twenty-one north, seven, six.
Some sort of vegetated screen there. Simple, because it can't really screen all the way down.
It can't screen through the parking space.
Right, it can't, because it can't, because of the ridge, can't push the parking any further.
Well, you could, you get rid of the proposed, you would just, the loading zone doesn't work anyway, and it's-
Well, it actually does work.
It's part of, it overlaps the handicap space, doesn't it?
Well, it overlaps the handicap, eight-foot door opening thing.
It's different reason. I would think, I would prefer to see that-
For the type of activity, the loading will be limited.
I don't care about the loading, I don't care about either.
The screening is going to be hard.
I think screening is going to be hard.
Well, if you just shift these on a plan, you just privy to that whole line. I mean, I would think everybody would want that property like a track.
But isn't it going up like that, or am I wrong?
No, that's on the, on the back side. We-
How about if we privy it from here, or we put some vegetated screening from here to here? Something simple.
From the edge of the parking space.
I just think we need to be consistent, and we've consistently said to everyone else, you have to screen your lot line, you know, it could be in conjunction.
Do not allow this person that came before-
I can't, I thought so.
I know we had it previously to that, but I think we did.
Now, having said that, if you didn't need relief, you wouldn't need to screen. You know, and there certainly are tenants or owners out there that have put up fencing and whatnot.
Yeah, I think that the area that you're asking to be screened, it's going to be lawn. It's not going to be for storage, I can understand why you'd want to screen storage. The parking area is minimal, and basically it's going to be yard space.
Well, we just, we've requested it of everybody, you know that, so, again, I don't know why we should.
But I don't think everybody out there has to deal with what we have to deal with. I mean, basically, I've got six, I've got, you know, area behind the property and all along the side of the property, I can't use.
How high is the retaining wall?
Well, those are the setbacks, basically. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be much closer than six-point-five feet, so what do you mean? You can't use it.
I don't know what the big deal is, to be honest with you, about screening.
I don't either.
It's not that expensive.
Why do you put it behind the retaining wall?
Put it on top of it, whatever, but I mean, you can do it. I don't see the big deal either, and I don't see this, they're utilizing up to six-point-five feet of the lot line, so it's not like you've been, you can't use the lot, I don't, I don't get that one, but, I don't know.
That is also, that's six-point-five foot area, but that's a solid grass wall.
We're good with that, I don't think. Anyway, why don't you make a motion, Michael, with the screening, and we can move on.
Okay, so just to be clear on the screening, what, what do you think is in-
I thought we've been requiring-
In terms of what we've required before, I think we're the-
Actually, looking at it, they're going to access their parking spaces through here, correct? So you really could screen the whole of it.
Do you step it back four feet for safety purposes?
Yeah.
And do the whole south side?
I mean, at this point here, you're looking at a retaining wall, I'm not sure it becomes necessary to here. And certainly I don't think it's necessary in that, for one of these.
So the front to the retaining wall.
I know what Santos' application needed to require screening of the whole, it was more the open areas. And she, well, the reason we have to do that is because people are going to want to work at dumpsters in the yard.
I know, that may be the case, but I'm pretty sure we've been consistent about asking people to screen their lot lines, but maybe, maybe it's only the building, but I would think you'd want to screen it and have some pri, you know, some semblance of privacy, but whatever.
No, I missed the meeting, but I think all the other applications I've sat on in this subdivision were required.
We definitely have.
Can you show where you want to screen, and what you said?
Uh, starting four feet from Flint Road, all the way back.
On the-
On the south side.
South side or? To the retaining wall?
Nope, the retaining wall comes up over here, so, basically you're saying from corner to corner, correct, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you may, if the retaining wall gets higher than that, you're not going to-
So let's say to elevation forty-six.
You're going to be out there with a laser?
I'm afraid of this, the elevation is a challenge.
I'm going to get a drone.
You call it halfway down.
Which one did you get?
Phantom two.
Yeah.
How about the, how about we call it sixteen feet from the real lot line, okay?
Sixteen feet, done. And make sure it's not substantially underground.
It's all the underground, look at this evil.
Chairman, Chairman, we were wondering if this structure is substantially underground according to Mr. Fair.
Well, I think it probably is.
Well, it is, without, without the retaining wall, it would be, and you wouldn't even need to be here. Just do whatever the hell you want.
It's underground top with you.
And then this vegetate screening be done within six months of-
That, that, of course, is a crazy thing that we did, but just make it part of the seal.
That's fine. Well, the reason we did it at the beginning-
No, six months.
Was because he was so proud of it.
Was the elevation was going to change a lot next door and you'd find it, so.
All right, so it's part of the seal, let's move on.
Is that your motion?
Okay, it's been made, who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Susan, Susan, for the young ladies. Uh, okay, so any further discussion? No, all is in favor, aye, thank you. Harry, working hard on that screening. Let's get this one, this quick, yeah, thirty-
I have a builder, sorry, you want to write? I cannot be the whole thing because I'm starting.
I'm good. Thirty-six fourteen, Anticottage Hospital, Inc., thirty-seven, fifty-seven Prospects Street, for the applicant.
Mark, do you want to sit on this?
Why, you were a frequent patient or something?
I resolved it today, I'll do a lot and a couple things.
Yeah, it's fine, you don't have a con, let's go, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Kovak.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Jesus, you're an embarrassment to the board. All right, now we're all sitting, rock and roll.
Again, my name is Frank Kovak, I'm the facilities director at Anticottage Hospital. I'm here requesting variance to be directed temporarily. The tent is to be used primarily for physician lectures, burn haloc, for the two weekly cases. It just makes sense to keep the tent up for longer than thirty days, for the duration, just without the record possibly the necessity for moving it.
What are the, what are the time periods you want it up there?
From as soon as it'll allow it through, north to September.
You had the tent before, right, but you took it down after thirty days?
Uh, we did have the tent.
Or maybe you did, maybe you didn't, you don't have to tell us. Anybody have a problem with the tent, temporary tent?
It's over by, what was the daycare?
Small Friends.
Small Friends, yeah.
Foundation building.
Mm-hmm.
And what's it going to be used for?
Lectures and seminars, stuff like that. Excuse me.
How do we, how do we not get in trouble with this?
Why are we in trouble?
Variance, right?
Can I speak to the application as a member of the public?
Yes, you may.
I would support this application, I think that what the hospital proposes to do probably qualifies as an education use by the corporate corporation. I think that they may not even need to be here for a week, so I think you can either make that fine or keep it in asphalt, keep the storm on, and then do the temporary variance of this temporary education use.
I like the first choice, but you don't need to be here.
Yeah, I do too, I just don't like-
I don't have a problem with that.
You know, you're going to have some, some other group that's a non-pro, you know, some other group coming in here looking for it. So I like Mariann's idea.
That was a difference from the tent that we allowed for the white hair and theater, it wasn't that long ago?
Yeah, it was long, and we gave them a variance.
I mean-
It will, I don't, I didn't make that either.
I mean, Michael, I don't see your point about, you know, if we're setting a precedent, it's probably worse to set the precedent that you can be a, use it for, you know, educational use and be a non-for-profit and erect your tent for as long as you want. So I think it probably is better that we go with the variance.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to control the situation than have them-
Not necessarily for the hospital, but-
Yeah, yeah, I'd like, I'd like people to come to us at least to ask.
So.
Other than that, I have no issue with the request.
I'll make a motion.
No, no party, I think your application says no parties, no functions, purely for the educational-
Business hours.
Business hours. Okay, we're good? Who wants to make that motion? No one?
I thought Susan was going to make-
I was going to, but you can.
Who? Susan, go ahead.
I'm too cold.
Too cold?
I know, we can't meet here anymore, it's inhumane.
I can't even express how cold I am.
Just make the motion.
I'll just make the motion to approve the relief.
Grant the relief as requested?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? No, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, how about a motion to adjourn, adjourn? All right, what are we going to do, who, so what do we, what did we decide to do on the viewing of the Cabana Gazebo?
We just making a final review?
Yeah, we'll have to do that, of course. The only decision we have before is to-
Right here.
I put it behind.
So, off the record, what's going to prevent people from now building a house with a full basement under their front porch and make that living space? And not count as ground cover?
Well, arguably, that's okay, because ground, you could, you could make the argument, the ground-